Time to stand?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, it's time.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start this evening, I'd like to remember two members of our community who recently passed away. First is Claire Catherine Cronin at the age of one hundred and one. She passed away on October 31st. Born in Lawrence, Massachusetts, graduated from St. Mary's High School and McIntosh Business School. She met her future husband, John Cronin, during World War II at Hampton Beach while he served in the Coast Guard, and they married and settled in Andover. She worked for many years for both the Andover School Department and the town of Andover as an administrative assistant. Upon retirement, she moved to Newburyport, and she is survived by her son, former counselor Robert Cronin, and his wife Sue Cronin of Newburyport and an extended family. So please give them your thoughts and prayers. Jerry Lischke passed away on November 7th of this year. I'm sure many of you knew Jerry as a local realtor, very well-known, very well-respected here. He was also an auto mechanic and a fistiando of high-performance car engines and was known for breathing life into old buildings as well as new cars. Very involved in what we now take for granted as the formerly abandoned Toll Building, moving office uses into that space. He was very active in supporting the Harbor Schools, Emmaus House in Havrell, and the Boys and Girls Club of Lower Merrimack Valley, as well as the Newburyport Bank. And as I said, as a realtor, he was chair of the board of Realtors in Newburyport, lifelong member of the Dalton Club, and active in many other ways. Please remember him in our thoughts and his family, which also includes his daughter, Leela, and son-in-law, and counselor Mark Wright, if we could keep them in our thoughts and prayers this evening. Thank you. Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd be happy to, Mr. President, for the 7:00 PM City Council meeting on November 12, 2024. Counselor Grantis.
Here.
Counselor Harmon.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Wright.
Yeah.
Counselor Z.
Here.
Counselor Dunian.
Here.
And Counsel President Cameron.
Here.
Eleven present, none absent.
And late files?
We do have a few late files, Mr. President. The first one is Communication 596, which is the so-called PPOD, Planning Board Report, to go to PND and Committee of the Whole. Communication 597 is the MBTA Planning Board Report, again, to go to PND and Committee of the Whole. Communication 598 is the Kyle Miller email with respect to Denit Drive and Jones Street intersection, PWNS. And Order 636 is the resolution with respect to Marie M. Swapp.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files with one amendment striking the referrals for 596 and 597.
Second.
Take them up in the regular agenda, please.
Mr. Clerk, also there was the order that I had sent in a couple of hours ago.
Which... I'm looking at Kathleen, what do we have, a number? It is the order with respect to the process of appointing the next city solicitor.
Clerk. City clerk.
City clerk.
Did I say that? City clerk, sorry. I've got time to retire, Mr. President.
And I...
That is also a late file.
So moved.
So moved and seconded?
Second.
I think a voice...
Yeah.
Byron on our end.
We should do a roll call with one remote participant.
True, true. Okay. Roll call on the aforementioned motion to allow the late files. Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunian.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. President, could I motion to take Order 636 Resolution out of order, please?
Please.
Second. Thank you.
Mr. President, would you like me to read the resolution into the record?
Please do so.
If I can do justice to this, resolution recognizing Marie M. Swapp on the occasion of her 150th birthday.
150. That was a test for Marie.
I wanted to make it a memorable night. So let me start again, recognizing Marie M. Swapp on the occasion of her 105th birthday, which I know... Which I know we are maybe a week or two ahead of schedule, but still, let's not quibble about small items. Whereas Marie M. Swapp has been a resident of Two Harris Street for many fulfilling years and is currently the oldest resident of Newburyport. And whereas on December 6, 2024, Marie will celebrate a remarkable milestone, her 105th birthday. And whereas throughout her life, Marie has worked locally at Graff Brothers, Western Electric, in the office of Justice Norman Espovich, whom I knew well, traveled extensively to China, Israel, and other countries, and exemplified strength and resilience, inspiring those around her. And whereas Marie has witnessed incredible changes to our world, from her childhood during the Great Depression through World War II, to the technological advancements so-called of today. And whereas it is fitting and appropriate that the City of Newburyport formally recognizes Marie M. Swapp for her extraordinary and inspiring journey, including but not limited to her daily walks along the rail trail. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Newburyport, through its City Council, hereby honors Marie M. Swapp on her 105th birthday, December 6, 2024, and expresses its deepest appreciation for her remarkable life and positive impact she has made on our community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Marie M. Swapp as a token of our recognition and respect, and that we celebrate her legacy as a cherished resident of Newburyport, dated October 28, 2024, submitted by Counselor Ann Neuber, Counselor Sharif Zaid. (applause) Toss it down, you two. Look at me. Sit down.
Sit down.
Congratulations, Marie. You can come back at 1:50 as well.
We'll pencil you in.
I make a motion to waive the rules in emergency and approve the resolution.
Second.
I just want to speak really quickly. Marguerite and her niece are my neighbors. She asked for as much embarrassment as possible, so I want to make sure that we lay that on. Having moved to Newburyport, you just, you can't ask for better neighbors and a nicer person. And that whole thing about the rail trail is 100% true. Get out of the way. Stay on the right or stay on the left, but just stay out of the middle. And it's, we have a really nice neighborhood, as I think many feel that way in Newburyport, and we're really blessed to have Marie or Margie as our neighbor and glad that she could make it out tonight. And thank you for the council for indulging the late file. And I also give a lot of credit to the clerk for contemplating this and thinking about it and adding to the embarrassment. So happy birthday. Thank you for coming. Do you want to say anything? No.
Marie, you can slip out at any time, or you can stay to the bitter end, whichever is your preference.
I'd drag you to the grave, though.
Congratulations. That would lead us to public comment. I see a lot of names on the list. I would...
Do you want to just vote on it real quick? So we can take care of it.
I was going to say.
We should probably do that.
We'll take a vote. You may want to hang on, Marie. This might be controversial. We're going to have to vote on this.
Thank you, Marie.
Good night. Happy birthday. (applause)
For the record.
For the record.
Roll call for the record on the resolution, approving the resolution. Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
And Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
And Counselor Khan. Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Dunian.
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you. And we'll turn to public comment. I know I can see a long list of names there. We will stick with two minutes. It has to be on the agenda, so be, I will, I'll do a light gavel or interrupt you in a gentle way. And we will take online comment. If people could raise their hands. If somebody has already said what you want to say, we'd love it if you just said, "I appreciate what John Doe said," and I echo that. That will help us keep this moving. And again, we'll take online after... All right. So we would, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize, and we can blame your handwriting. Mike Fine?
Feeney.
Feeney. Mike, if you could step up to the line, state your name for the record, where the, right in front of the microphone. And after that, it'll be Patty Myers and Lee Harris. Thank you. So just step up to that and write into the microphone, name, address, and two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Mike Feeney. I live at 54 Milk Street and have lived there for 35 years. I'm considered a butter because our backyard is within 75 feet of the Brown School. My issue with all of the proposals is parking. I don't believe they really thought it out. My guess is it's based on their experience with other things they've done, but did those other things they did have anything to do with a one-way street with parking only on one side in a high-density area? If you go to Mil-, if you go to the Brown School right now, you'll see eight cars in the parking lot. Obviously, after the construction or whatever's going to happen, those eight people, eight cars are going to find someplace else to park, probably on Lime Street or Milk Street. And one other thing I wanted to say is, I've read some things and seen some things. They keep comparing the number of people with the James Steammill. The James Steammill, 99 residents, 41 parking spots. It's a two-and-a-half to three-year wait to get a parking spot, and that has kept people away, or had... Sorry, I can't live here because I need a parking spot. Okay? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Next would be Patty Myers.
Hello and thank you. My name is Patty Myers, and I live on Sylvester Street. I am here tonight to speak in support of the YWCA Brown School Affordable Housing Plan. We know the big problem before us is a lack of affordable housing. So the question is, what is the best way to address this problem? I believe the best way is to approve the YWCA plan for the Brown School. The Y plan provides significantly more units at lower rental rates than the Zeta plan. Its plan is also, its plan reflects a willingness to consider neighborhood concerns about density. Another important question is, what kind of a community do we want to be? Do we want to become an enclave of mostly well-to-do older folks? Or do we want to be a vibrant community of diverse income levels, ages, where art, culture, and small businesses flourish? Are we going to use public assets to enhance the lives of more people? Or are we going to turn over a unique public asset to a private developer with minimal impact on the amount of need? When there is so much need, I want my community to put people over profit. When that happens, we are all enriched. I urge you to support the YWCA plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Harris.
Yes, you know, it's interesting.
Lee, could you go up to the microphone?
So the people at home can see.
State your name and address, please. Thank you.
Lee Harris, and I live at 3 Charles Street. And interestingly enough, I live right next door to the James Steammill. And that is a collective community there of a group of very diverse people, educations, experiences, tending to be of the older population, but there are still some young families living there also. So we do have a nice diversity. And really, I had not prepared anything, so I'm speaking extemporaneously. I hope I didn't garble it up too much. But I totally, 100% agree with Patty. She hit the nail, the total nail on the head, and I think we need to look at the why, you know, as a community. This is our thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Mira.
McCray.
McCray, sorry. I know you, and I still agree with your handwriting. Nice to see you.
Well, I'll preface it by saying I agree with Patty as well, but I'm going to sort of give my perspective as an elder, which is really hard to do because I'm only 84. What a night to be an elder! But I am increasingly limited in what I can do. And so the community where I live becomes ever more important, where I bank, where I do my grocery shopping, go to the dentist, go to the doctor, the hospital, and my friends. And I know them, and they know me, and I feel part of a community. And I think we have heard all the data about community and a sense of belonging enhances people's sense of well-being and health, mental and emotional health as well as physical health. So I've been lucky enough, after this, I've lived here 40 years, but for the last, say, over a decade, maybe 15 years, I've been lucky enough to be able to stay in Newburyport because of the Newburyport Housing Authority. And I'm so grateful for that. And I hope that it will be possible to overcome the difficult, you know, the diverse obstacles to the plan, the YWCA's plan, that would have more units for more people at a lower rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Mary Ann Vissi.
My name is Mary Ann Vissi, 10 Ken Street. I'm writing, or I'm talking here today to express my extreme disappointment in the mayor's recommendation of the Zeta proposal for the Brown School. A combination of market-rate housing with only eight affordable units at 80% AMI is not what we need in Newburyport. It reflects our worst aspects of being a city for only high-income people and intolerance for those from lower classes. The ability to sell the building down the road at market rate is just adding insult to injury and reflects the worst of who we are. I know it's a difficult decision, which is sure to displease some people, and I respect the time and energy poured into this over time. This is an opportunity to use a city property to reflect who we say we want to be, a welcoming endeavor of city. The only proposal that truly addresses our need for deeply affordable housing for seniors, including the many people who have been forced to leave our community, is the YWCA proposal. The Y is willing to decrease their number from 43 to 39 units. This is only 11 more than what Zeta proposes. If you look at the deeply affordable developments around the city, it's obvious that lower incomes equals fewer cars, higher incomes equals more cars. In addition around the parking thing, you know, I'm really glad to see the bike-sharing program come to the city, and I hope eventually we could have a car-sharing program, and I think that would serve the needs of many people. The YWCA has a proven track record of building and managing properties, and they are a local, local entity. This is the only sensible choice that addresses the needs of Newburyport residents who are in highest need of housing. Thank you for your work on this and countless other issues for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Mears.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jaclyn Mears of Vernon Street. I'm also the Family Support Specialist at the YWCA Greater Newburyport. I'm here to support the YWCA's proposal for the Brown School. I personally receive calls on a weekly basis and provide tours of the YWCA's current housing and see the need for housing of diverse income levels and household sizes. I have met countless seniors of all socioeconomic backgrounds that are looking to join a community, and that is what I believe Newburyport can become, a diverse socioeconomic community if we choose to become that. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Coff.
Hello, I'm Shane Coff of 70 High Street, and I'm here to speak in support of the YWCA proposal as well. I live in the South End at 70 High Street with my wife Alyssa and two daughters, both of whom are students in the public schools. We moved here 11 years ago from London. Prior to my assignment in London, we made our home outside of Boston and Cambridge, and were lucky enough to have a choice when we returned, stay in the city and all it has to offer from a cultural and community perspective versus move to the suburbs for affordable space in an easier-to-navigate school system. We were not willing to compromise on community, walkability, and relative economic diversity. We chose Newburyport, densely populated, small businesses, arts community, and things for teenagers to do, activities and jobs and such. Our first home was on Charter Street, a couple hundred yards from State Street and in the shadow of the Sullivan Building, a nine-story public housing tower for senior citizens. We have since moved to a larger house in the wake of COVID to ease working from home. But if I'm completely honest, we still miss our, excuse me, we still miss the daily engagement with the variety of characters who would walk up and down our street from the Sullivan Building. Never was that more true than during the pandemic when we would sit in our front stoop as a family and interact with our neighbors. This town is now decades into gentrification, and some of those community assets are at risk. In fact, the entire state faces a crisis of affordability that threatens to undermine our communities, our economy, and the arts. We have opportunities as a city today where we have a state government that has prioritized removing barriers to getting affordable housing built. We have an engaged developer with a vacant space in Story Ave, and we have a publicly-owned property ripe for development in the Brown School. I was very proud to see our city act proactively in building the Boston Way units at the train station, but that's only step one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I'm already done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Subem Venesti.
Hi, my name's Subem Venesti. I am, live in the South End. I'm three doors down from the Brown School, and I'm here to support the mayor's decision to choose a Zeta proposal for the development of the Brown School site. This proposal of market-rate housing and 28% affordable housing for seniors will create a continuum of options to meet the needs of seniors wanting to downsize, as well as seniors at a variety of income levels. Like, while all three proposals, including Zeta's, are in excess of the current zoning, Zeta's proposal best fits the footprint of the Brown School site and closely adheres to the purpose of the Brown School Overlay District, which was created in 2019. Zeta has already shown a willingness to negotiate towards the goals of the original RFP, and I am confident that there will be every effort to achieve the affordable component at a 60% of AMI. As it stands, the project has already exceeded the requirements for the city's 40B rules. The Zeta project can be a win for seniors, and this mixed-income housing development will provide an important puzzle piece towards the Newburyportable housing goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen Farrell.
Good evening, councilors. Nice to see you all. Kristen Farrell, 28 Spofford Street. I'm speaking on tonight, tonight on behalf of the Commission on Disabilities. The NCOD, as you all know, is tasked under Mass General Law to manage the funds received from fines garnered by accessible parking violations here in our city. These funds are required under the law to be spent specifically for the benefit of persons with disabilities in our community. The Project Lifesaver Program came to our attention late this past summer from a resident of Newburyport. It is a time-tested program and technology provided to law enforcement to assist officers in locating any at-risk person who has wandered away from their caregivers. After learning the details of this unique program and how it could absolutely benefit people in our community, the NCOD was happy to be able to collaborate with the Newburyport Police Department and the Newburyport Senior Center and vote on using NCOD funding to reinstate the Project Lifesaver Program in the city of Newburyport. Using Project Lifesaver, the time for officers to locate an individual who has wandered is averaged 30 minutes compared to four or five hours without Project Lifesaver. The NCOD appreciates your support in approving this expenditure transfer from our funds. We are confident that the Project Lifesaver Program will assist the Newburyport Police not only in the finding of enrolled individuals of all ages who may have a propensity to wander, but also to provide a small but invaluable amount of peace of mind for their families and their caregivers. Thank you.
Julie Menon.
Thank you. I'm Julie Menon. I live at 83 Lime Street, so I'm not a direct-to-butter, but I do live four houses away from the Brown School. And I've lived there for 30 years, so definitely in a time when the Brown School was open as a school and there was a lot more traffic and a lot of noise on the playground from the kids. I share my neighbors' concerns about the density and the parking, but I don't feel that the Zeta project has enough truly affordable units. Their proposal suggests a 400-square-foot studio for $1,770 or an up to 800 to 920-square-foot two-bedroom for $22,62 a month. I don't know many people, many seniors, who can afford that much. I do support the Y, the Y plan because I think it's more affordable and there's more units. And, you know, if the Y could drop in a few units and maybe find a few more parking spaces, I think that would go a long way towards helping seniors stay in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephanie Nikotic.
Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. Three things. One, my thanks to the mayor for his explanation of the selection of Zeta, and it's something that I do support for the reasons he mentions in his memo. Two, I noticed that you do have a letter from Brown School neighborhood residents, and it's noted in the agenda that it will be received and filed. So my request is that you reconsider that and instead send it to the Planning and Development Committee so that it can be discussed with more members of the public sometime that's not the beginning of a city council meeting. The letter basically is neighbors saying, "We want to be heard." And so I think the best way to hear them is to at least have that in committee for some time. Three, the Port Plaza Overlay District is coming up tonight. I'm in full support of that. I know that the mayor just signed a 40B agreement with Richard Kaplan for the development of Kmart, but there are many reasons why it's good for us to have this alternative local zoning in place, which I'm sure the sponsors can explain to people better than I can, but I just wanted to support passage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Isabella.
Hello, I'm Jeanette Isabella.
Hello, I'm Jeanette Isabella. I live at 100 Water Street, which you probably know is at the corner of Water and Lime. So as it pertains to the Brown School, I just want to say that I echo what Stephanie had to say about the Brown School. The thing I would ask of you is that we don't make this another waterfront project that goes on and on and on. I wasn't sure. I've been here 40 years. I wasn't sure I would see the waterfront in my lifetime. I want to be sure that I'll see the Brown School reconciled in my lifetime. And I'm getting up there. So don't make me wait. You know, if that was the last possible affordable housing development in the city, then I would say, yeah, pack them in. But it looks like with Kmart, we're going to have a lot of affordable housing. And affordable housing in Newburyport is a misnomer. We all know that. But it would be a step in the right direction. So I just hope you can come to a consensus and you can all agree on something that will get it going and off the ground. We've waited long enough. I personally like the idea of a little park. If they take down the gym, it would be a nice little addition to that corner of the world. I'm moving away from there as soon as my house sells. But it's a wonderful neighborhood. And a little park would be a great addition. So anyway, do what you can to collaborate, compromise, get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. That will lead us to Sarah Holden.
Sarah Holden, 34 Toppin's Lane. Good evening. I realize the council is not voting tonight on which developer will be chosen for the Brown School. But if Zeta is eventually chosen, I believe the city is missing a golden opportunity to use this precious city resource for a fully affordable project, not one that includes a majority of market rate units and a mere nod to affordability at 80% AMI. Let's do the right thing for our seniors and choose a proposal that gets closest to meeting the intended goals of the RFP, the proposal of our local YWCA. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Nickerson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elaine Nickerson from 16 Purchase Street. I'm not on a butter, but I'm one house away. And I'm on the Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust. But I'm here, I'm representing myself as a neighbor. Okay, so the letter to the board, the council from the neighbors, addressed a number of issues. And I kind of made my comments regarding those. Density and zoning was one. And I'd like to remind everyone that when the council approved an overlay district many years ago, it was based on a scenario when the plan was to keep the youth services on the ground floor and limited the unit count to 20. However, now youth services has plans and hopes to move to Low Street. And that, in my opinion, leaves room for more living units and a small community room. In addition, not one of the proposals came in at 20 units. And that's because it's not financially feasible to build a 20-unit affordable housing rental development for seniors. I've seen them for sale developments at 20 units, but not rentals, especially for seniors. Furthermore, the difference in density between a 21-market rate, 21-unit with market rates and eight affordable units at 80%, the difference between that and a 39-unit one-bedrooms, that would be made up of, sorry, of two bedrooms and one bedrooms versus a 39-income restricted all-one-bedrooms and studios that the Y has proposed is negligible. It's not that much different in terms of density when you throw two bedrooms in. The other thing was affordable, level of affordability. The income level of an 80% family, I don't have it in my notes here, but it's relatively high. I think it's $92,000 a year for a single person. And the Y, and that's just eight units. Oh, my goodness, I talk too slow.
Sure. Robert Curyer.
I'm Robert Curyer. I live at 3 Summit Place. And I'm here speaking as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. Everybody in the room is concerned about the density of parking at the Brown School. And if you take the amount of parking that the Y requires, it's a half a unit per unit, which is 30, excuse me, 20 parking units. Zeta has 34. So if you talk about an impact to the community, it's because the elderly people that live in there, the 30 and 60% that the Y will do, don't own a lot of cars and they walk everywhere. So the impact that the council has is to take the mayor's approach, throw it out the window, and come back with a different proposal, which is the YWCA, which would meet the needs of the community far better than Zeta. That's it.
Thank you. Diana Carey.
Could people speak into the mic? I always do. Put it right in front of my face. Diana Carey, 33 Temple Street. And I'm not in a butter, but I am a South End resident. And I walk my dogs around the area. And I see many people enjoying the neighborhood. And I see people driving around, including my mailman, looking for parking. So I am part of the group that thinks that we need to rethink, perhaps, the proposal by Zeta that doesn't provide enough parking. Proposal by the Y that doesn't provide as much parking as we need. I have great respect for what the Y has done around the North Shore area in terms of providing housing for people. And I think they do a great job. But I think we do need some kind of compromise. And I know compromise these days is a dirty word. But I think that there still should be some negotiation with Zeta to get more affordable and more housing that is meeting the needs of the area. But if we go with the Y, then fewer units and more parking. Because it's obvious that we need affordable housing in the area. I've had friends who, I haven't lived here all that long. I've been here 20 years. There used to be kiddies who walked to Brown School to go to school there when I first moved here. And that, of course, went by the boards. But we need to have an opportunity for people to be able to stay here. I've had lots of friends who've had to move because they can't find one-floor housing in this city. You know, they can find perhaps things that are affordable, but there's still stairs that they have to negotiate. And that's an issue. And I think that obviously the Brown School is a prime property.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh, did I do the Carey thing?
Timekeeper. Stephen Hinchi.
So Stephen Hinchi from 98 Prospect Street. And today I'd just like to speak in favor of the Project Lifesaver initiative.
The mic doesn't work. It's just for the TV.
It's a prop. So.
The mic's for recording. It's not for in here. So you're not amplified.
So my daughter Anna is deaf and has severe autism. She absconded for the first time this summer. And it was a very extremely terrifying experience for all of us. So being able to reliably locate vulnerable children and as well as elderly people would provide enormous peace of mind to families like mine. I'd like to thank the Commission of Disabilities, the Senior Center, and the Police Department for their work in supporting this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, that'll lead us to online comment. There are four speakers with their hands raised. And I'll go in the order that I'm seeing them. So if you could speak loudly, two minutes, name, address. And I will allow you to talk, starting with Sandia Douglas.
Hi, thank you. Sandia Douglas, I live towards the Avenue. I'm over near the Brown School, that is, in Newburyport. I just wanted to note that Mayor Reardon has made affordable housing a central focus, one that he really intends to solve. But I'm very disappointed with the recommendation on the table. It is not delivering enough units. It's not delivering anything that's remotely affordable by most people's standards. And so I strongly urge the council to go back and take a hard look at the Y. I'm also curious as to that governance process that led us to make this recommendation. It is not clear to me, seeing the big difference that the Y would make in solving this problem, how Mayor Reardon arrived at this recommendation. It would be helpful to see exactly how the committee members voted and what factors were considered. And then finally, I wanted to note that as far as governance of the process goes, there was an inherent conflict on the committee with the committee member having acknowledged a long-term business relationship with Zeta. And while I'm sure this committee member was incredibly incredible and meticulous and objective in how he conducted his role in this evaluation, it just is not a conflict. It should have been allowed to exist. And it wouldn't pass the SMEL test in most public impact sector governance and oversight processes. So both from a process and an outcome perspective, I strongly encourage the council and the mayor to go back to the board and take a harder look at the life proposal, which is, will solve, get closer to solving the problem we have for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, good evening, Owen Smith. I live at 175 Story Ave. And I'd just like to remind the city council that arbitrary and capricious decision-making often leads to the waste and abuse of public assets and public money. And this Brown School is a good example of that. We're going to give property to a developer for $0 and get a minimal amount of units. It felt perplexing to me that I actually requested the individual rating sheets by each of the committee members. And I found that if you tallied the scores up in accordance with the RFP requirements, the Y was the prevailing winner. So I have more questions about the 40B process here. I think it's best that we revisit this and actually do something that's good for the public. And that would be providing the maximum value for that asset of rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Winoka.
Good evening, Rich Winoka. It's 60 Longfellow Drive. Excuse me. I would like to also speak in support of the YWCA plan. Many people have said it better than I, so I won't be late with a point. But I think the city should reconsider and look at the YWCA plan as it goes further to alleviate the housing issue that we currently have and provides more affordable, indeed more D and B affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you. Walt Thompson. Mr. Thompson, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Walt Thompson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Walt Thompson, 100 State Street, Newburyport. Police explained in words a 14-year-old would understand the rationale for passing the $1 million government fee on to all city taxpayers and not to the Port Plaza to go over.
Okay, thank you. You all set? All right, that would, our final commenter would be Beth Trapp.
Hi there, Beth Trapp, 124 Low Street. I wanted to, we've heard really a lot of thoughtful commentary this evening. And I am really heartened to hear people stepping up and coming together. I wanted to zoom out for just a minute to think about what the Brown School was and what it could be for the future of Newburyport. We have a public building that for decades and decades was used for the public good. People tended to this building, teachers and groundskeepers and community members. And people attended this building to learn and become citizens, to make this town a better place. And unfortunately, it's fallen into disrepair. And we have one last chance to get the most public good that we possibly can out of our city building. And the idea that we might give it away to a for-profit developer is shocking to me. We can do so much better. We can work with ideally the YWCA, whose plans bring us much closer to what we need for the people who have lived here their whole lives and don't have anywhere to go that they can afford. 8% AMI is $2,000 per month and above. The Y is offering us 100% of this building at rates that people could actually afford, starting at more like around $900 a month. We can do this and we can get the most views out of this property for the last thing that we can do with it as a city. And I really urge everyone to take a moment to pause, consider the process, consider the outcome, and really step back to think, what do we as a community want for our future? And who does it include? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it for public comment. All right, that would lead us to mayor's comment.
Hello, mayor. Hey, everyone. I'd like to yield all my time to Diane Carey, please. Well, first, it's great to be here. Happy Veterans Day. I just want to say thank you to all of our veterans, active and inactive. Thank you for your service and for your sacrifice. We really had a wonderful ceremony outside yesterday on a beautiful day here in Newburyport. I want to thank the councilors, for those of you that were able to come. The Newburyport High School marching band, that is growing in numbers, was awesome yesterday as well. And we had some local boys and girl scouts that made the day really special. So, and just a big thank you to Kevin Hunt for all he does and all the energy and enthusiasm he brings to those ceremonies for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We had a big election last week. I just want to thank Clark Jones and his staff for all their efforts. 88% registered voters. No one's checked Richard's math on that. But still, we had a pretty high turnout across the city, which is great. I also want to just credit him for pivoting really quickly in Palm Island, for getting the trailer out there. That was a great solution and it worked out well that day. And now that the election's over, we can, you know, turn our attention to the boathouse and the future of it out there. I also just want to mention, you know, these brush fires are happening all over the North Shore, if you've been watching the news. And Newburyport has become involved in it. They were up in North Reading yesterday battling fires. And they were in the Boxford area today. But I just want to give them a little shout out for doing that hard work with these winds and the dry conditions. It's pretty dangerous out there. There was a memo in your packet today about the Brown School. I don't know if you saw it or heard about it or, just kidding. You know, that was an incredibly difficult decision. And like I said, I'm, you know, getting to that process wasn't easy. I thought we had a great advisory committee that we put together with a lot of great expertise. And, you know, we got three proposals. And we looked at them, you know, pretty carefully. And we brought back a couple of the developers in for some, for more interviews and questions. And we actually brought some in a second time. And, you know, I thought where I landed with the Zeta project, one, I thought we had a developer that really wanted to be flexible and work with the city. And, you know, two, you know, I thought they'd be a good partner moving forward. So, I mean, this is where we are in the process. I thought this was the compromise, right? A lot of times someone mentioned, "It's hard to get to the compromise." And sometimes we don't get to the compromise in this room. So I thought I picked the proposal that was the compromise, right? You could have completely affordable, you could have no affordable. And then hopefully with this, and again, I'm coming at from the point where I'm going to try to increase the affordability and the amount of affordable units, right? So what was initially proposed by Zeta, that's not where I'll land. And if that's where we end up being, I won't bring that proposal to council. And again, all those orders will come in at once in the coming weeks. But we're already having conversations at the state level to help increase the affordability of what Zeta proposed. The Y, also a great, great partner. They would have been a great partner in this. But at the end of the day, when they were brought back in to see if they- at the end of the day, when they were brought back in to see if they could reduce the unit count, they could not do it. And you know why? Because it's an economics thing. They have to have those units and use those tax credits to do their project. They have to have them. That's why they couldn't come down in their unit count. So that's why it was very difficult to go with them. And we can get in discussions about, you know, units and cars and things like that, and, you know, I appreciated the over 60 neighbors that reached out to not only the council but myself with some of their concerns. And if you go and read that letter, they didn't like any of the plans. So what I did was kind of look at the responses that I got from that and then say, all right, how can we make one of the plans, you know, better for the neighborhood and also give us a much-needed housing for seniors, right? This is about accessible housing for seniors, whether it be, you know, affordable, which I'm trying to get to 60% AMI, but also housing for seniors that we heard during budget season, seniors that are stuck in their homes because they can't sell them because they have no place to go in Newburyport to live, right? And we can't have families come back in and take those houses. There's no circle, there's no circular motion in our housing right now. And I do think senior, reliable housing, accessible housing at the Brown School is also something that we can do for our seniors here in the city. So I'll leave it at that. We have a long way to go in this process, but that memo tonight kind of maps out what the advisory process was. And again, I'm also gonna have Christine set up one-on-ones with all of you in the coming weeks, so we can certainly talk about this more in our one-on-ones. I hope you can all make some time to come see me, and we can talk about all the great things going on in the city. Just some quick project updates. Lower Atkinson is really moving right along. If you've driven on Merrimack Street, they've got the gravel parking lot out behind Founder's Field laid, and now that, we've got the Allied, our sidewalk contractor, coming out to do the sidewalk work on Merrimack Street. So I'm really pleased about that work going on. I'm sure you all watched my Mayor's Corner last week down at Woodman Park, but we're gonna do a ribbon cutting down at Woodman Park for the new basketball court down there. It is awesome. Little too windy for my three-pointer right now, but hopefully next week, next Thursday, we're gonna do a ribbon cutting at 2:30. Hope you guys can make it. And then, if you've been by the middle school, lots of work going on in the middle school right now. Those three tennis courts, that big CPC project that we got through this year has been started there. They won't finish probably for tennis season, unfortunately, but maybe by the end of it, we'll have those courts ready to go, but we're really gonna try. But again, thank you to the neighbors, the Friends of Newburyport Tennis, and the CPC for supporting that project. Not in your packet tonight because it just happened, but I did sign the development agreement with Kmart. I am pleased that the P Pod discussions are still going on. I do think, you know, agree with Stephanie Nikotic. I think that process should conclude. You guys have put a lot of work into that. But I was really pleased with the development agreement landed, and we can certainly have more conversations about that, but, you know, I'll try to get that into your next packet so people can see that a little bit more. But I thought we landed in a good place, and I really appreciate the Water Sewer Commission for all their work on that as well. Mold remediation, I'm sure Andy Port would love to talk to you about that a little bit, but, you know, the planning department and the assessors office have been really flexible working upstairs and remotely. We are going through Maya's vendor program, and so we should have some more information in the coming weeks. They'll do a walkthrough this week, and then we'll have a scope for that work. But again, I appreciate our city offices being flexible during that time. And just lastly, tomorrow night, we have our joint city council school committee meeting. We do this every year. Right after the election, we talk about the, what FY '26 is gonna look like. We're gonna hear from the city side. Ethan Manning will put a presentation together, and Superintendent Sean Gallagher will tell us what's going on with our schools. And it's gonna be a great opportunity for the council and the school committee to talk with each other and talk about where we're at, where we want to go, and hopefully do some forecasting about what we see coming early next year. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions or comments to the mayor? Councilor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So I obviously saw your press release around the development agreement at Kmart. It's obviously in your mayor's report as well, but I wanted to ask about how you felt comfortable signing a development agreement when we have an act of legislation in front of us today that I'm assuming is a part of the negotiation, that being the Water Sewer Commission waiver of the privilege fee. So if that is actively in front of us, how could you sign a development agreement that includes that waiver, that fee?
Well, we've included information from our city solicitor. We felt comfortable that the Water Sewer Commission had the right and the duty to waive or change those fees, which we landed on a number, 472,000, and change over 20 years at 4%. And also, we had a payment plan done for the INI fee for that as well. So I felt comfortable because I was given the legal option to do that.
But you just this morning, in the meantime, maybe you are not soliciting a legal opinion from our city solicitor around this.
Well, what I said was, I think any kind of a solicitation for an opinion should come from the city council president, and I think our city solicitor is absolutely ready and willing, but what I said to you answered your question, and so that's why I didn't have an opinion made. And that's why I offered to council president to have you and maybe council president go on a Zoom with our city solicitor so she could maybe explain that to you better.
In the event that the council passes the resolution or were to rescind the original order, how would you handle that?
I think I've signed a development agreement. I'm moving forward with this path, and I think the P Pod is a good thing to have in a backup in case something like this falls apart, but as far as your legislation goes, I don't think that, I'm ready to move forward with what I've signed here.
I guess what I'm questioning is, can you do that? Because again, if we were to rescind-
Your council president and talk to your city solicitor.
During the discussion around the resolution, and if we collectively want to get another opinion, and again, some confidential legal opinions that were done by KP Law a couple of years ago on this similar matter were discussed, we can ask for another opinion, but it seemed to me that this was followed properly. But again, that's just my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, and we can discuss it.
I would certainly disagree, but, okay. Thank you.
We all have opinions. All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, that would get us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for October 28, 2024. One Communication 595, which is the letter from the South End residents, the city officials. Currently, it's receive and file. There are no transfers, there are no appointments. The following items are coming out of the respective committees. Transfer 200, excuse me, Order 619, License and Permits, Application 234, Communications 585, 587, 588, Planning and Development Ordinance 176 and 184, Public Works and Safety Orders 587, 625, Ordinance 186.
Pull Communication 595, please.
Yeah.
I'm on the same page. Motion to approve as amended. Second. And collectively to receive and file the mayor's update, too, please.
Okay, so we're removing Communication 595 to the regular agenda and approving the mayor's comment.
Receiving and filing.
Receiving and filing, thank you. Okay, roll call. Motion-
Roll call and approving consent agenda as amended and receiving and filing mayor's update. Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Lead us to regular agenda, communications.
The first communication is Application 235, Emergency Preamble on the ICS Santa Parade fundraiser in Market Square, and Application 235 is the same ICS Santa Parade fundraiser.
Motion to waive the rules and collectively approve the emergency preamble and the underlying application. Second.
Okay, motion made in second, waive the rules, emergency preamble, and approve. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, roll call.
Roll call on Application 235, both the emergency preamble and the application itself. Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. Lead us, Mr. President, and I think to Communication 594, the Brown School review memo from the mayor.
Motion to refer to general government?
Second.
Second. I think it might be better served to put in planning and development.
I'm open to it.
The rules would be called general government.
General government, if there's a building, municipal facility that's not under the purview of a particular department, that could be general government. This also concerns zoning, so it could be planning. I think whatever it is, it should be a COTW and-
So I think it would be, sorry, let me stand. I think it would be better served, seeing we're gonna have zoning that's gonna come before planning and development, to have this tag along with the zoning.
Withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay. And new motion?
I move to collectively, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I just to have it go to planning and development.
COTW?
And community. That's my motion.
Second. Thank you. And I'd like to offer maybe tagging on 595 as well to the same?
Tagging.
So just go together?
Yeah.
Okay, so Communication 594, which is the mayor's memo regarding the Brown School, and Communication 594, five, thank you, 595, which is the letter from local residents, collectively would go to planning and development, maybe to the whole. Counselor Zee?
Thank you. I did prepare a few comments. I'm not gonna read all of them or say all of them, but I did want an opportunity to just speak at least briefly. So, and I apologize, it's big issues and you have a lot hent up you want to say, and I certainly have a lot to talk about on this matter, but I just wanted to say a couple things. First of all, I'm gonna get right out in front and just say, I'm really hoping to work with my colleagues on the council to get to a place where Zeta is and can be the compromise that we're looking for. I think every meeting, we have quite a wide swing in the pendulum. You know, we have a neighborhood meeting and it's tough, and we have a lot of conversations about density and challenges there. Then we have another meeting, and it seems to be more affordable housing focused, and that drags us in another direction. And I'm really hoping that the council can work together to find the middle, and that, I think, is really our role. A lot of public commenters have talked about, you know, can you take a closer look? I know I'm not the only one, but, I mean, I've been at this basically since I started at the council. I sat through the first RFP, through the ad hoc, through the RFI, obviously was sort of on the front end of the Brown School overlay district, and then sat on this RFP committee as well. So I really think I know this issue well, and I'm excited to be able to hopefully contribute to everybody's understanding, and of course, to advocate for my ward in that process. And I also say, think very well said during public comment, was the need to move forward is immense. I mean, back in 2017, we had a 17-unit proposal, we had a 29-unit all affordable proposal, and we were not able to progress forward on anything, and that's been really frustrating. So secondarily, I do just want to talk a little bit about the neighborhood and the neighbors. They are my constituents, not only mine, of course, it's right on the line of Ward 1 and Ward 2, and I speak for myself only, but they're really honestly good people, and I think the people who spoke tonight are really good people, too. And everybody's approaching this with really positive intentions, but there are actual constraints, real hard, kind of rock kind of place type discussions. And, you know, throughout all this conversation, the Brown School parcel is never gonna change. I mean, maybe we could dream it would get bigger, but it's always gonna be that acre plus or minus that it is. And as I talk to people, I often remind them that density is not purely subjective, it's largely objective, too. We measure density in units per acre, and we are asking the neighbors on any of these plans, even Zeta, which I support, and I'm saying that transparently, as a compromise, you know, really is, it's not just excessive compared to the Brown School overlay, but compared to other metrics like 40R, right, which has a density of 40 units per acre, compared to 40B, which can be all over the place. Even the new MBTA communities, which we'll be voting on later tonight, only asks for 15 units per acre, so we're in excess comparatively to that. And we did have considerable public process around the Brown School overlay district, and I do want to correct one thing, that the Brown School overlay district absolutely contemplated all possible scenarios with NYSS and the gym, without NYSS and with the gym, and without NYSS, and without the gym, which is the scenario we're currently most likely looking at. So it did contemplate all of those. You don't have to take my word for it, you can read it in Unicode, but that's where it tops out at the 20 units. And so the next thing I want to say, and I promise I'll bring this to a close, is that having sat on the committee, I can attest that bidders were asked, I think, in multiple ways and multiple times to moderate on the number of units, and CSI, which has gotten no conversation, did moderate its number of units. The other two bidders were not either willing or able to, and I don't begrudge any of them. I think, as was mentioned, there are some functions of this that have to do with funding sources and so forth, but the reality of it is, we are where we are. So I know there'll be a lot of conversation about this, but I also want to tell those who are listening, if any still exist, that we're not bringing this back out to vote on the three. That's not the question. I think it's positive to have conversation and to foster understanding between everybody to see if we can get to a compromise, but at the end of the day, we're not gonna stand here and say, I'm for this one, I'm for that one. Ultimately, the mayor will have to come back with something and see if it can garner the support that's needed to pass. I echo his comments that I very firmly believe that there's negotiation room here, both on the level and depth of affordability, and that that should be taken up. So I hope that those things will happen, and I hope to be part of really helping drive that compromise and be a part of the conversations and sharing what experience I have for what it might be worth, and certainly support the referrals to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Granis and Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Thanks, Council President. I do rise tonight to express my disappointment of this election of Zeta Plan for the redevelopment of Brown School. The Brown School is a significant city asset, and it is essentially the last major vacant city asset at that. I do want to know from the administration why the city is not seeking a financial gain from the Zeta Plan. Have we not learned our lesson from the sale of the Kelly School back in 2014 for a measly $750,000, and this, this planned $0? It's my belief that the Zeta Plan was chosen because of lower density, but in reality, is there really significantly less density between Zeta and the YWCA plan? And the answer really is no, and here's why. While Zeta calls for fewer units, it does call for a total of 38 bedrooms, whereas the YWCA plan calls for 39 bedrooms, essentially one more bedroom than the Zeta plan. Essentially, we're gonna end up with the same number of people living at the Brown School if the YWCA plan was chosen over the Zeta plan. I think the butters are more concerned with the number of cars and the loss of street parking, and rightfully so, I hear that. Even though there are more units, not bedrooms, in the YWCA plan, the income level for 16 of those units have such strict income requirements that it is unlikely that these residents would be able to afford rent as well as a car payment. This leaves 23 units that could possibly have a car as opposed, as compared to the Zeta plan that has 29 units, all of which can most likely afford rent and a car payment. So in essence, if parking is your main concern, we'll most likely end up with around six less cars onto the street with the YWCA plan. I do want to share with my colleagues and to the residents that I have contacted the mayor, and I did urge him to reconsider his selection of Zeta, and for him to collaborate with the council to find a solution that truly benefits our residents and our city. Eight units, eight units on the Zeta Plan at 80% AMI, you have, that's a max income of $91,360 with a max rent of $2,448 versus, versus the YWCA plan, which has 16 units at 30% AMI. 30% AMI is $34,260 with a max rent of $918. The YWCA plan has six units at 50% of area median income at $57,100, max rent of $1,530. And they have 21 units at 60% AMI with a max rent of $1,836. It's a, it's a, it's a no-brainer for me. I feel like we are at an impasse, and this needs to go back to the drawing board, and I think the mayor needs to meet with us all and start again. And, Ayeel, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, Counselor Khan, and then if no one else, Counselor Zee.
Thank you, President. Well, my fellow counselor from Ward 3 kinda took a lot of the words I was gonna say. One of the, well, first, I just want to say, you know, sitting on the committee, I admittedly did favor and voted for the why proposal, gave them my highest score for pretty much all the same reasons that half of the other members of the group did the same. But what troubles me, and was just mentioned, is the fact that we're giving this building away, that we're gonna take this literally one of our very last assets of the city, that we can actually have a say over what happens to it, and we're gonna give it away to a private developer, a private developer, not a nonprofit affordable senior housing developer, but a for-profit market rate value developer that is going to develop 21, or maybe, maybe we'll get a little bit more affordable if we get some negotiations, but more than half of those units are gonna be market rate. The parking requirements for market rate is double, let's not forget that, you know, compared to affordable senior. compared to affordable senior. So there's some math to really look at a little more closely. Again, with the number of people living there being maybe one different, and the number of cars being parked is going to be significant with market rate versus non-market rate. But really, why would we entertain giving the building away? That's, for me, just the most perplexing. I don't know how that's a compromise, I don't know how that's, like, even a consideration when you have two nonprofit with tons of, you know, senior affordable nonprofit experience, both having offered money for this property, you know? And here we have someone with little to no experience with developing senior affordable housing, asking for the building for free. And I will tell you personally, when we did this with the Kelly School, it was a travesty, what happened with the Kelly School, with it being surplus and then sold off for market rate development. That building actually has historical relevance, significance beyond anything the Brown School's ever seen. I attended that school as I attended the Brown School. I also, you know, went there along with our former Ward 2 counselor, who stated that at the very beginning of our very first meeting, that he was an alumni of the Brown School, so was I. So it's just as heartbreaking to see this building just lay empty for multiple years, and literally continue to just wither, because we can't get over the parking issue that may or may not actually be an issue. It's a what-if. It's a, it's an assumption that someone that can barely afford 30% AMI rent or 60% AMI rent is going to have a car or two cars, for that matter. And I just don't see that math being realistic. So I don't support this plan, I'm very disappointed, and frankly, I don't really think that any explanation given, as much as the work was put in and time was put in by my fellow Ward 1 counselor on the issue, is going to make me understand how we're giving the building away, and how that's a good deal in any way, shape, or form. For profit, for, you know, a profit development of market value rate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Before I speak tonight, I do want to publicly make note here that I am in a butter to the Brown School, and as such, I did reach out to the State Ethics Commission about a week and a half ago, and I have a written determination that I could participate on the communication, and have that filed at the, with the city clerk here, after going through the process that I need to do to get that, to be able to participate. So I want to make that clear, and if anyone needs to see that, that is filed with the clerk's office. I guess I didn't realize we were going to get into this debate, it was in preparation for when this goes to committee, so I'm glad I did get that in today. But I do want to just make note of a couple of things. I am glad that we're at least having a chance to voice our opinions on this. Some of us were not on the committees, and we're not privy to how it went in terms of the process of reviewing. We all got to see the different proposals, but we didn't get to weigh in on it. So I will definitely also be taking the mayor up on his offer that we meet with him and give our thoughts. But a lot of what everyone has said, as well as the public comment that we heard here today, really resonates in terms of folks that even I live around are saying the same thing, that we're giving away something, that they were waiting to see what's going to happen in terms of affordability. When we all ran, especially the more recent time, when there was the mayor election as well as the city councilors, we were all talking about affordable senior housing at the Brown. And because I live nearby, when we talk about the neighborhood, listen to the neighborhood, please listen to the neighborhood, because not all of them are pleased with the Zeta proposal. So I think what we need to recognize is, we will hear different opinions, but our basis of opinion should be based on what we are understanding, and what we've all learned in our time here on the council, what AMI means. I met with a senior who was saying that, I like 80% AMI, I like the Zeta proposal. And I said, well, do you know how much the monthly rents are? Because they were talking about how they'd love to live in the Brown School, having gone there, their grandfather went there. I told them the rent, and they're like, what? That's 80% AMI? So there's a lot of misunderstanding of what these rental rates are. And there's also a lot of misunderstanding of why this is the opportunity to do it here. No developer is going to make deeply affordable housing. We've even heard it, that the formula for getting the tax credits, it's hard. But we have an entity, and I think there's other entities, it's not just the Y, there's other developers who do the same thing, that can make it work. But why are we so strongly feeling passionate about what's happening with the Brown School? Is because it's a missed opportunity to settle for 80%, when we know MBTA communities, everything else we're doing, even the Kmart, is 80% AMI. No one is talking about those 60%, 50%, 30%. And that's the need in our city. So that's why this is extremely important to us. I think we all need to now wear those hats, knowing the details, knowing the information, and we need to educate the public about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wright, Counselor Harmon, Counselor Shand.
Thank you, Council President. My mind is not made up on how we're going to proceed. But what I would like to point out is that the way this is going to work is, we're going to vote this one up or down. And then, when we vote it up or down, it's up to the mayor to change his recommendation. So for anybody that's listening, the city council has to vote on what's been presented to us. So if you want to advocate for a different solution, don't advocate with us. We don't control that process. Advocate with the mayor. I don't know, I haven't done a vote count, but it's a high bar. It's a supermajority vote to dispose of the Brown School. And so at the end of the day, if we vote this down, it's possible, then there may not be another option coming from the mayor. So I would encourage everybody to give this a fair look and see if there's any compromise in what's been presented. Or if you feel that you don't have, if there is no compromise, then I think it would be great for everybody and for the process to be outspoken. If you don't think you can support this, say that, so that we don't spend two months to get to the point where it's not going to be supported. So, you know, for the future of the Brown School, and for the very important need that's needed, you know, let's not, if you're not going to support it, say so. Because then the mayor has to make a decision, that he can either continue down this path or make another selection. But, you know, for the integrity of the process, let's not drag it out to just come to the same conclusion. So it's not a choice between Zeta and another, and another solution, until the mayor decides that it's a choice between Zeta and another solution.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Harmon.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. Much has been said by both the public and my colleagues, which I appreciate. I think part of the reason why we see everyone around this table standing up tonight is, it's our first opportunity for something that's been in the public, it's been through phases of this in the past, and we're here again discussing the Brown School. But for those of us who didn't participate in the selection committee, we've been sort of on the sidelines. So I want to extend my appreciation to everyone who participated in that. Clearly, a lot of time went into it. I have a lot of questions on the information that's come out so far. An RFP that started with the scoring mechanism about keeping a gym has resulted in a decision that a gym is no longer essential for this project, and so I question how that, you know, math works, and then maybe it does, I haven't seen all the detail. But there's a lot that's gone into this, appreciate the time and effort. I ran and spoke with many voters about housing affordability. I also talked about progress and getting something done, and moving things forward, and not letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. And so I'm really torn, because I want to make sure that we don't let the Brown School fall down before we make a decision to move forward. But at the same time, I will add just a couple of additional stats that haven't been given tonight, which include, the income of an average renter in Newburyport is $53,000 in 2020. Forty percent of our renters are considered cost burden, meaning they spend more than 30% of their gross income just to put a roof over their head. The greatest need among renters in Newburyport, 37% of renters, is at the 30% or lower AMI. Lastly, because I can't find an overlap in the data from our housing production plan, which is where these numbers come from, the proportion of 65-plus residents in Newburyport is projected to increase by 23% over the next 30 years. And so I just ask my colleagues, as we evaluate this, as we go forward, I believe in all of us in good faith toward trying to find a solution, is this the best we can do? Is this all we can do, or is this the best we can do for Newburyport for 30 years from now, when probably none of us will be sitting around this table, but maybe some people will be able to afford to live in the Brown School?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shand.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my other counselors who have spoken so eloquently tonight. I too will be brief. I have already spoken to the mayor, I spoke to him last week, and I said I could not support the Zeta Plan. I was on the advisory group, and I was in support of the Y. I have been vocal in my support of senior affordable housing at the Brown School. And I think this is a city asset that we should not be giving away. This is, this is something that all of our names will be on 100 years from now. What is the Brown School going to be? And I certainly hope we can, we can find a path to it being something that we can all be very proud of, and something that our seniors, who have made this community what it is, give them an opportunity to be living in the community that they helped develop. And just another few more stats, I mean, I asked the planning director before the evening started, and 100% AMI in this area is $124,000 a year. Our mayor does not make 100% AMI, so keep that one in mind. If we are looking at 30% AMI, I mean, 80% AMI for the Kmart, you're making $99,000 a year, 80% AMI. $74,000, 60% AMI. Those are big numbers, and for seniors, that is not something that they can even fathom, most seniors anyway. So for seniors that are looking to stay in this community, let's think about that when we start going down this path of what we're going to do with this building, because it is a special asset to this community. And I do think we need to be very thoughtful when we're going forward. I appreciate that the communications are going to be in P and B, we will certainly set up a meeting and get it scheduled so that we can hear from more of the residents in a, I'll give you more than two minutes to speak. All right, Ayeel, thank you.
Counselor McCollough, then Counselor Zeeb.
Yeah, sure. I was not on the committee, so like some, I don't have all the facts and information. I'm just, I'm starting my due diligence process on this. One of the things I keep hearing repeatedly is that the Brown School is an asset, and it has an intrinsic value, and a real value as well. And if we want to dispose of this, part of our process is we need to get an assessment of this. And we should begin that process today. We should empower Council President to get an assessment of the property, so we know what the real value is. Because other than that, we're going to get an opinion that it's worth 10 units, or it's worth five units, or it's worth seven units. I'd like to know that it's worth $3 million. And then we can start to negotiate that says, this is what the property's worth. Who knows? If we want a better asset, maybe we do some horse trading and we do some things like that. But that is in our charter, that if we're going to dispose a property, we need, we have to go through a certain process to go about that. And I know we might be months or weeks away from actually coming to a decision, but before we start, as we call out that the Brown School is an asset and has a value, we need to agree on what the value is on that, and the only way to do that is to have a third party look at that. I do appreciate the dialogue, I think it's healthy and good, and I do see the range that's going on there. I will add a different twist to this, that we talk about, and we talk about affordability. What came into, what came into our email boxes this afternoon is the impact of the proposed tax rate of the budget that we passed. And that is 5% increase this year, on top of 15% over the last three years. And we have raised taxes 20% if we approve this over the last four years. So we're as guilty as anyone in terms of making Newburyport unaffordable for the average person, for the average senior who retired on a fixed income. They factored in 3%, 4% increases, maybe 20% over four years, our taxes will go up. So we need to think about that as we begin our next chapter of things that we're going to debate about, in terms of salary increases, and in terms of capital expenditures, and things like that, that we go down the path on. So again, I look forward to the debate, just starting the due diligence, and I have as open a mind as anyone right now. Thank you.
Counselor Zeeb.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I agree with the board four counselors, just so much to talk about and rarely have the opportunity, but I just, I want to, I guess tonight, my main goal is to break the notion of impasse. You know, I'm somewhat taken aback by some of the comments that it's over, and that's a little bit frustrating, because in that nine years that I mentioned, what's really kept the Brown School from doing anything is the notion that there's only one path to success, there's only one solution that could possibly be acceptable. And this iteration, it's the Y's proposal, but in the past, it's been other proposals, it's been this, and it's been listening to one end of the spectrum or the other. And so there's just three things I want to say. Number one is, we're not giving the building away. What we're actually doing is choosing to use all the value we would otherwise receive towards affordable housing. And that's the honest financial pro forma numbers, that you can do that math for yourself, but when you have a developer come in, they have to balance what they're building against what they're taking. And obviously, these bidders, the three of them, have different business models. The Y, for example, relies on grants and all these tax credits and these things you hear about. And so what are you getting by doing that? Well, you're getting the units, but you're also getting three things. You're getting more surety that the project will occur, you're getting a timeline, which by the way, we spent a lot of time talking about in 2017, that it will actually happen in a timely fashion, and you're also getting out of having an ongoing sort of financial liability against the project, which is often unofficial, but rears its head through CPC grants and other subsidies, and maybe property tax things and what have you. The second thing is, I guess, you know, we're having a zoning discussion whether we like it or not, and I'm going to be blunt and say that in the ad hoc, and then whatever you call it, the committee, you know, there was a lot of talk that 43 units was too many, and there was, you know, numbers battered around that were lower than that by members of the committee who are also on the council. So I'm perplexed that now we would support it, so it just doesn't seem fair. And a lot of the comments you're hearing are 30,000 foot, we need affordable, AMI is not fair. All of those things are, you know, fair, fair comments and true, but where's the counterbalance to that for the neighborhood? I would offer that my colleague, Ward counselors, I hope you listen, you know, because you have a Ward 2, and you may be in a situation like this. And the at-large counselors owe those constituents something as well. They don't owe them everything, but they owe them something. So show me the counterbalance on that, or show me how something else could be a compromise. And, you know, it's just, I just really want to open the door for the conversation, because I do think some negotiation needs to happen with Zeta, and I've been clear about that, and I know where I would want to go with it, and where I'll advocate to go with it. But please, crack the door open, let a chance for compromise be available. Thank you.
Counselor Elaine, online. You can, you should be able to speak.
Yep, thanks. Since we're all in here on it, it's no real secret, I grew up on Milk Street, 37th Milk Street, I'm very familiar with that Zeta area, and how much changed over, I don't know, 40 some odd years now. Then I live in Wood 6, I'm down there quite regularly. I've been asking for appraisal on the building for four years now, and I still haven't seen anything. So needless to say, I'm a little bit irritated with that. Also, that in any real estate transaction, you always start with a grid. You've got to know what you're dealing with, what your value is, and where you want to end up. So first things first, if we could get that done, it'd be great. The other thing I'm really struggling with is affordable housing, how that works. So these aren't guaranteed to be Newburyport residents ultimately. We all speak of, if you're great, they can stay here, you know, once you get to a certain age, you can just sell your house, move to affordable housing on Milk Street and call it a day. I don't, I don't think that's possible. I know Counsel President Hughes said we can earmark a lot of them towards it. I'd like to know what that number is as well. I have a minute of mine, how I feel with the developer. It's real hard to wrap my head around, because I don't have the appraisal, I don't know what. I don't know what that number of Newburyport residents truly is. So I'm kind of an open book here in saying, I don't know which way I need. I want to see a lot of affordable housing done. I do think it's important for our community, for all residents, not just, you know, senior affordable housing, but affordable housing for young families as well. I think, just like we just brought up, that in 20 years, the number of seniors is going to be increasing. I can't remember exactly what the number was, but where does that leave us for young families as well? I don't want to limit this to just a certain number of senior affordable housing without all the other information that I just mentioned before. So that's where I'm at. I really can't tell you which way I would vote for. Who is important at this point? There's just so many missing pieces to this puzzle for me that I really am interested in. No doubt, I am.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Preston.
Sure. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I don't want to be the odd man out on this one, so I'll say something. So, you know, I have always said, and I most certainly was pretty public about this when we were campaigning last time around, that I was willing to compromise on the Brown School to get something done. Every day that the, we don't get something done at the Brown School, the Brown School crumbles a little bit more, and it's, and just, it's terrible to me to let an asset such as that just fall apart in front of us, because nobody is willing to compromise. I'm reading the tea leaves here, and it certainly sounds like we don't have enough votes for Zeta. I'm also, I don't think I'm going too far out on a limb in guessing that we probably don't have enough votes for the Y. If those people who are a no on Zeta won't, aren't going to be willing to compromise, I don't think it's going to send a really good message to those people who would be a no for the Y, that they need to find compromise. And I want to remind everyone that this is essentially the same exact process that happened at the Brown School seven years ago. There was a proposal brought forward by the mayor. There was a public outcry, because it was not the Y. In the end, it did not move forward, and here we sit, seven years later, and the Brown School is still doing nothing. And if nobody is willing to compromise on this, we are going to find ourselves in exactly the same state. And if seven years from now, this is hopefully finally getting done by someone, shame on all of us in this room today. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to Counsel Donahue.
Yeah, just last thing. I also would like to echo the board since Counsel, I really do think that an appraisal should have been done a long time ago. So if that could be.
Yeah, you know, I know the Director Port has spoken on this a few times, and he just gave me this sign, and I gave him a look. So if you could just speak to that, that could also be discussed in committee, but I know I've asked you a couple of times.
Sure. I'm happy, I think I've spoken to this issue before. I'm happy to work with the mayor and the council on any sort of appraisal. I just wanted to point out, I think, two things that might be relevant. One is, I guess there's two options for an appraisal here. They're either going to look at the zoning, and what it says today, what you can do today, and they're probably going to come to the conclusion, based on things we've gotten as feedback thus far, that 20 units may not work for someone, especially compared to the cost that we understand from years ago, even, it would take to renovate the building. So in essence, they might be looking at the existing zoning, or they'd be looking at something we call a hypothetical. So we'd say, if it was, the zoning were changed to allow this or that. And that requires us to give them that, those parameters. So in either case, I guess, I guess would suggest, if we're going to do that process, which could be beneficial, we do have to inform that process in one way, form, or another, because the Brown School zoning today doesn't seem like it would work for someone. And the hypothetical, we'd have to come to some agreement on, in order to give the appraiser that, so they could give us back what they think the market value would be for that scenario.
So it's doable, but complicated.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So motion on the floor to collectively refer both to planning and development and committee of the whole.
Both communication, 594 and 595.
We're still on that.
So we'll have a roll call on that.
On the motion as stated, Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That leads us to.
Motion continued.
Communication, 590.
Transfer.
No transfers, I think. Means for 203. Motion approved, transfer 203, disabilities commission revolving to Project Lifesaver.
Second.
Are we skipping over what we brought out from the?
It was a joint one. We did, sent both of them to P and D.
Collectively on the last motion. 594 and 595.
Got you. So transfer 203.
Yes.
Which is police disabilities commission revolving 9,863 to Project Lifesaver, same amount.
Motion made by Counsel Z. Was there a second?
Second.
By multiple people. Pick one. Okay, Counsel Z.
I don't have too much to offer. I did speak with Kristin Farrell, who's still here, and I'm sure she can answer any questions that you have, and she spoke at public comment. We continued this, and I certainly personally think it's worthy of support, and the dollars and the memo, I think, are self-explanatory.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Counsel Donahue.
Yeah, thank you, President. Just want to rise in favor of this, and reiterate that, you know, just to be clear, this is, this is the NCOD's money. They're just asking for our permission to spend it on this very, very much needed, as you heard in public comment, program. So thank you for, the residents that brought it forward. It has been out of place for, I think, in my opinion, a little too long, and I think it will benefit a lot of families with peace of mind. So thank you.
Thank you. We could do a roll call on that.
I think Counsel, Counsel Lane may have.
Oh, sorry. Counsel Lane. Do you have your hand raised? Was that from before?
Sorry, well, that's kind of like talking when you're on mute, and I can hear myself and nobody else you hear. I just want to say that I do fully support this program. I actually approached Kristin when I saw the Western Police Department was doing a similar program, and they were able to locate somebody that was missing that needed help, and it was just wonderful. So I applaud this effort, and I fully support it.
Thank you. All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the transfer.
Transfer 203.
Roll call.
Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you. Would lead us, Mr. President, transfer 204, emergency preamble, and 204, the underlying transfer, DPS from general free cash, 143,00520, to the library elevator repair.
I'll make a motion to waive the rules, approve the emergency, and collectively the underlying transfer.
Second. Bless you.
Please proceed, Counsel Z.
You know, to be honest with you, I don't really have much information beyond, or really any information beyond what the memo states. It's, I guess it's related to a new, to FS90, which is a compliance regulation, and that the work need be done by the end of December. I don't know if Ethan's available. My one question, because normally we'd vet this in committee, is just, were other funding sources considered? And then I would just, I mean, I'm sure other counselors may want to ask.
Yeah. Director Manning, did you hear that? This is regarding the library elevator repair. Are you able to provide any of that information?
I did hear that question, and I believe Director Amaral was going to be available if there's questions on this specific project. I can tell you, in terms of other funding sources, given the amount, there really, at this point in the fiscal year, there just wasn't any other source besides free cash that really made sense.
I'm gonna, I don't see a name.
That is Wayne.
Okay. Nice. You're on the side. Wayne, can you?
Hello?
Yeah, hi.
I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm here, good evening.
You sound like.
Good evening. So I, yeah, there really wasn't any funding source available for such a big expenditure. We were assuming to be another one of those $5,000 to $10,000 repairs, upgrades, that we covered to operational funds of City Hall. We came in at the amount we see there, the shot that you're giving, and that's where we're, we're, we are right now.
Okay. Any further questions for Wayne or Ethan? Counsel Z.
Just another question we typically ask. So it does state that the 143,520, which is an oddly specific number, is also an estimate. So are we confident we will get it done for the 143 and be in compliance? Or is there, is there, and is that the total cost of the project? Or are there other funds being added to this to make it whole?
Sure. This is the total cost. This is where 50% contingency, because our kid controls the elevator, it's affected and some of the, some of the, the device needs to be added to it. So this is the price plus a 50% contingency for the project.
So I would just make a motion to amend that this transfer is approved contingent that any, if there are any remaining funds, they return to free cash when the project's closed out.
I will second that.
Okay. So that has been amended.
I'm actually the sponsor, so.
So if that's all right, we'll consider it friendly.
Very friendly. Okay. Counsel Wright.
Not to bring up a sore subject, but I mean, 2022 is when we found out that this was going to be required. I would have expected it to be on a capital improvement plan, and I haven't seen it. So we missed something, guys. We had, this is a capital expenditure. It's now going to get paid out of free cash, and it's not on our, it's not on anybody's visibility as far as a capital improvement.
Ethan or Wayne, any comment on when this was on our radar screen? And I can allow you.
2022.
So we moved up in 22, I don't think we understood the cost of the upgrades at the time. We were told in 22 that it was a module, it was a module that they could replace and take out and replace. We get a fight on that, you just assumed it'd be $5,000 to $10,000 to replace that. That was not the case. In fact, it's the whole computer system in the elevator itself. We misunderstood the guidance of what it would take to do. There were other elevators that fell in line, it was also, but they were newer elevators that only cost around $5,000 to $10,000 to come up to code. When we went to those who, the library, we assumed that it would be the same amount of money to bring it out to code, which was not, because the elevator at the library is not older than the police station, the library, and the scene is on the other. So we had to do the same switch at the elevator, at the elevator, a lot of so, but much less with just, and updated to the software system.
Counsel Khan.
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you to the DPS Director. I also want to point everyone to that every year, we're supposed to get a buildings report. And I would ask, you know, part of that is to see things like this, too. And I know before we mentioned HVAC equipment, their age, but I would love to see that building report be a little bit more comprehensive, and obviously tie into the CIP. But it gives us an idea, too, of the age of the systems, too. So just something for us to maybe factor in, in the next report.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comment? Counsel Donahue.
Yeah, quick question for Director Amaral. While we're on the topic of municipal elevators, what about City Hall? Have we looked at that? Like, is that coming down the pipe at all, or did I miss that in the memo?
Yeah, it's grandfathered. It's too old.
Oh, it can be fixed. Like, it doesn't need to be.
So we don't need that switch for the City Hall elevator. We did expect it every year by the state, and we have an elevator company. I don't want to point fingers to anybody on this, but, you know, we have some fault ourselves. But our elevator vendor, would it be great if they came back to us in 2022 to reach the forums, and then in 2023? We didn't afford it. We used them as a guide to help us manage our elevators. We don't have experience in elevators, that's why I pay so much attention to those. And, you know, I don't want to blame our elevator vendor. We have two different vendors, I believe, in the last three years, so we had a replacement, a changeover. But I think it was the perfect storm with our functions, the different elevator, different company, and the age of the elevator was not understanding. Actually, our elevator holder did the others, and just replaced the same unit.
But not grandfathered in the City Halls, because that's older.
The, the, the elevator, we ran it out of the library.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? So motions to approve the, both the emergency preamble and the underlying transfer without amendment. Any excess funds be remanded to free cash. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counsel Granis.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Orders. First order is, first three orders are continued from our last meeting. First order 603 is a crosswalk on High Street at Roseneb and Woodland Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Counsel McCauley. Yes.
Thanks, Counsel President. This is a crosswalk, went through the evaluation of PWS. We had approved it 3 to 0 along the way. The sponsor wasn't here, so we moved it to this one. I'll defer to the sponsor if he wants to give an overview of the plan.
Please, yes, thank you, Counsel President, and thank you to the Chair of Public Works and Safety for helping usher this through committee and saving it for me while I was unable to attend the last meeting. I would like to propose a small amendment to this to include underneath, number one, a second item to stay, and the removal of the crosswalk at High Street between Woodland and Oakland Street. This will just clean up the intention of this project. Thank you.
Okay, as amended, yeah. Clark, got that?
It's a removal of the crosswalk at, between Woodland and Oakland. So the one in the middle.
Yes.
Got you.
Is removed. Okay. Counsel McCauley.
I just want to validate that in committee, we suggested that, and the sponsor took it. So we, we are already approval from the committee standpoint.
Great. Further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, roll call?
Roll call on approving order 603 with that amendment. Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. May I?
Please.
Motion to approve order 621 gift acceptance O'Brien Park Bench 5500, which was continued collectively as well to approve order 622 gift acceptance Lynch Park Bench 5000. And collectively further to continue order 626 approval to pay prior year bills. 627 grant acceptance Maya Library HVAC. Order 628 gift acceptance Friends of COA. Order 629 gift acceptance PPA 2500. To refer, order 630 FY 2025 residential factor to budget and finance and committee of the whole. And finally, order 631 FY 25 tax rate order to budget and finance and committee of the whole. Second.
Great. This is what you would call a mega motion.
That's done.
Okay. So if the clerk would summarize it or I can, I can give it a shot. So orders.
621 and 622, those two gift acceptance park bench orders are to be approved. Correct. The following orders, 626, 627, 628, and 629 are to be continued to the next meeting, which is November 25. Twenty fifth, yeah. And we are moving orders 630, 631 to budget and finance and committee of the whole. That's it.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Roll call on the aforementioned motion. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you for your efficiency.
All right. That would lead us to order 632.
That would be approving. Anthony William Lloyd, three.
I'm sorry?
633. There isn't a two.
633. Order, the William Lloyd Garrison proclamation.
Motion to continue to November 25.
Second.
We, unless we've invented a time machine, could we have the?
Yeah, the dates are all wrong.
The dates corrected. I'd like to do it in 2024.
Details.
Guess we have it.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one. Okay. So the motion is to continue that?
I, I think so. I think it's fair.
And one simple. Fix the motion. Script has on the date. And to make it chronologically correct.
It's all 2023. The whole thing.
Would you do a second on that? Second.
Motion made in second. Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I just want to, assuming that this is meant for 2024, it does say, it does have a sort of the signature date of the 27th of November 2023. I just want to make sure that there's not some sort of time constraint around this if we were to not, to move it to a date certain of the 25th, that it's in time. I don't know what this is intended for, but I want to make sure it has time.
Mr. Clerk?
I know a little bit about it. I mean, the moving party who submitted it is fine with it being read on the 25th in anticipation of a, of a day that would be shortly thereafter, I think the next week.
Okay.
Oh, interesting. Everyone clear on what's on the table? Any further discussion? Roll call?
Yeah. Moving order 633 to November 25. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Okay. Gets us to order 634.
Motion to refer order 634 to PWS and committee of the whole.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
Yeah, I just want to introduce this. It's, it's been a very fast-moving situation. So I just wanted to give a couple of words of sort of why I've submitted this. But first, let me say, because there were aforementioned legal opinions, those are from quite a few years ago, and frankly, I don't believe them to be relevant to this in particular because those do not deal with Water Sewer Commission waiving any fees to this particular project. But I, I just want to say a couple of words. So the resolution is really not against the housing development at Kmart or the Friendly 40B process. Quite frankly, I am personally supportive of that. It's also not a resolution against the Water Sewer Commission. The commission was given a set of facts that I do not believe to be true, and they did their best with those facts. This resolution is an attempt to get the facts so that the city can make the best decision for the residents and the city. The resolution is asking for the Water Sewer Commission to rescind a recent vote to reduce a privilege fee to the developer of the Kmart site from $1,509,000 to $452,000. I question whether the Water Sewer Commission has the authority to waive the fee per the order that established the fee because the original, original order establishes the fee and directs the Water Sewer Commission, Commission to assess the fee, but does not give them an option to waive it. Further, I question how a $1 million waiver to a non-resident developer of a $300 million project is quote reasonable and equitable as that is also dictated by the order. When the residents of the Lower Street Sewer Tributary area, which are the neighbors of this particular project, have paid more than $1 million over the last 16 years in betterment and privilege fees, yet we are considering to waive $1 million to a developer that is having a $300 million project and is not a resident, that no one has knowledge of the Water Sewer Commission ever offering an abatement or a waiver of either the betterment fee or the privilege fee tied to the lower, the Low Street Sewer Tributary area project. The Water Sewer Commission is not to blame, and I've talked to the Chair to make sure that he does not, that he understands that. The Water Sewer Commission was told that they had the authority to waive this fee and the full weight of the deal for the Kmart project was on their shoulders because the developer would walk if they didn't agree to waive it. They thought they were reaching a reasonable compromise. I look forward to the discussion in committee so that we can better understand the facts and hopefully make the best decision for the city and residents. Thank you.
Counsel Wright?
I think this is, this is great. I'd like to advocate for the betterment fee for Plum Island residents to be waived at the same time. That's how ridiculous this is. That, it makes no sense to me because you've got, you've got a betterment situation around the Low Street area that was established by an ordinance. You've got the Plum Island betterments that people are still paying today, also established by an ordinance. Where's the equity there? If we're going to waive $1 million for the, for the Low Street betterment situation for all the people that paid into that, for one entity, and we still have people on Plum Island that are paying, faithfully paying off the betterments on Plum Island, how is that fair? So I'm fully supportive of getting to the bottom of this. And I, I would encourage the Counsel President to reach out to our legal counsel and get that determination as soon as we can so that we can entertain that in the, in the committee when it gets referred to committee.
Further comments? So motion is to refer this to Public Works and Safety Committee of the whole, roll call?
It's order 634. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. President, that leads us to order 635, the snow and ice plan, 2024-25.
Glotting on the PWS.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, just, I guess for those who may not know, we get an annual plan from DPS. It comes to us, we review it. It has parking in it as well that we need to review every year. Folks want to debate the parking issue, so we bring it in. It's an operational review plan about how DPS goes about addressing snow and ice plan going forward. It also has the blue light locations as well as parking areas as well, and so we'll address that in the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Further comment, discussion, hearing none, roll call?
Sending order 635 to PWS. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second reading of.
Motion to approve collectively, orders 175 and 185, one second reading?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Okay. Roll call?
On approving, what is? 175 and 180, 75 and 185, approval of second reading. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Did the late file order regarding the clerk hiring? It emailed.
637. Motion for, motion for first order 637, what's the title of it? Is it job description, city clerk?
It's order authorizing the hiring process for the city clerk position.
Motion for general government and committee of the whole.
Thank you. If I could, I'll just speak information purposes, not for deliberation. As the general public may have not noted, the clerk offered two months' notice that he will be resigning or retiring. And I think the date is January 8, 10.
Ten.
He made it through the election, and thank you, Clerk Jones, and Assistant Clerk Sullivan, and all of your accomplices for getting us through difficult election season. And, you know, I think I speak for many counselors current and past, which have been an enormous resource to all of us in, in innumerable ways, and they will definitely be big shoes to fill. So I, I did have a discussion over the weekend, not violating any quorums, with Counsel Z, because he's the longest standing member of the Counsel Continuous Member, and Counselor Shan, who's been here a while as well and also served as president. And rather than wait two more weeks, and when we've got really, you know, eight weeks to go, of which is time, to start the process by just offering this, this order, this is a placeholder. We're good. GG, we schedule it off cycle, so we don't wait just before the next meeting. I did attach a job description to it that's been cobbled together, some input from Rich, some other communities. Counsel Z and Counsel Shan had a little bit of input. So, so take a look at that. And, you know, all of this, with the idea of pushing this as soon as possible, getting, you know, hopefully a good candidate pool, taking a look, and an interview process. But then ultimately, and we'd have to go into the Wayback Machine to 20, 2005, I think, 18.8 years ago when Rich was hired, it'll be a full vote of the council, and it's whoever gets the majority. If we brought four finalists in, or I think that's what they had back then, maybe it was three, we'll, we'll figure that all out, just for historic reference. But it, obviously, it's an important position, and we want to have a good, solid process, and I think we can. So GG, committee of the whole, and we can iron that out, and then everyone will get their input. Everyone's going to get a vote in the end. So that's, that's, but thank you. So a motion made to refer to general government, whole was made in seconded. Roll call?
Okay. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
I'd really like to vote no.
He'll stay if we vote no. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
With a heavy heart, yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And did we do ordinance?
We should do, refer ordinance 188, no parking restrictions on Merrick and Carter Street, and ordinance 189, handicapped space on Market Street, both to PWS.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call, so 188 and 189 to PWS.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Hammond?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Committee items, budget and finance?
Motion to approve transfer 200, which is budget contingency 103 062, and police accreditation allowance 38 5 to police officers 135, and longevity 2500, and police officer night differential 3200.
Second.
Okay. So this is a first union contract that we've done in a little while. So just as a quick reminder, the way that state law works is we usually get presented these as a transfer, which can represent, in this case, a bit of a retroactive adjustment to, because they've been without a contract for a period of time. But approval of the transfer also constitutes approval of the contract and essentially binds the city to the future aspects that are in the contract. So the committee on budget and finance met on this last Monday, ironically at the police station due to lack of space elsewhere, but it worked out. And we did get a little bit of a presentation from the finance director, and a little bit of input from now the former chief of staff. So first thing is just setting the baseline. I guess, you know, some of the structural aspect of how the compensation is calculated is changing a little bit. In the past, I think the primary changes in the past, there was a salary plus a so-called stipend as the department maintained accreditation. And to my knowledge, the department has never lost accreditation, so that has always been paid. And instead of going with that model in the new model, the accreditation stipend goes away and effectively gets folded into the base pay. And similarly, there was also, I mean, you can call it something, depending how you like it, but another stipend around the utilization of, and the wearing of body cameras. Some of us were on the council when those became a reality. There was initially a, a small $50 per month add-on that was given to people, and then like it, but another stipend around the utilization of and the wearing of body cameras. Some of us were on the council when those became a reality. There was initially a small $50 per month add-on that was given to people, and then that was replaced by a 1% stipend. And unfortunately, some of these were done by side letters and things like that. So I think one of the goals here was to fold in all of those things, all of those side letters, and this would be the, this would be the agreement. I should have started with this, I apologize, but this is the police superiors, not the patrol union. So this specifically applies to seven individuals. These are your lieutenants and your sergeants, basically, and so those are the, those are the five individuals. So it did take us a little bit of time, I think, in committee to try and wrap our head around the folding in of things, and the presentation, frankly, of how the numbers were being shown. But I do think we finally wrapped our heads around the fact that those things are being folded in. So the common, or the natural question is, so what is the actual effect of all of this? Well, we did receive a spreadsheet from Ethan Manning, the finance director, that was posted to the budget and finance meeting, if anybody would like to look at it online. But effectively, it shows you the salary computations for each person all in, so you can basically compute it. I would say the bottom line in two ways. One is, give or take, it's about a 4.2% increase on average per year for the three-year duration of the contract, and this is one year looking back, and then effectively two years forward, because of, again, the retroactive nature, to go back to the beginning of, you know, the last fiscal year, the current fiscal year, because they've been without that contract for that period of time. So that's one way to look at it. You know, sometimes we say 111, 333, so this, you can call it a 444, if you'd like to. The other way to consider it is the net nominal impact, at least looking from FY '23 to FY ' '24, it's about a $35,000, that's what it works out to nominally. And then going forward from FY '24 to '25, it's in the same range, about a $40,000 or so, $38,000 difference between the two. So that's the bottom line of what you're looking at here. So it's a combination of changing some of those structural things of how the compensation will be calculated, and then the actual net effect of those changes. We did have a little conversation around the accreditation, and sort of whose responsibility then does it becomes, if the stipend is not tied to that. And we did have the new marshal present with us, and he sort of gave us an idea that it really falls on the marshal's shoulders, frankly, to maintain accreditation of the department. And at this point, the body cameras are sort of rote, they're just part of process, and so those things are being folded in. So we did ask for that additional information, we did receive it, but at the same time, we did vote it out of committee with a vote of three to zero, hopefully clearing up some confusion along the way, policy debate aside. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so I, part of this is the policy debate. You know, I attended the meetings, I understand we have a retro contract. It was a tough period of time, et cetera, with rampant inflation. We did get some fold-ins with some, some other things, stipends, et cetera, along the way, that would have happened. And I think that there, it's a fair contract for the superiors going, but I want to remind everyone going forward, especially those people that are negotiating going forward, is the, the level of growth on these are outpacing our ability to grow our tax base. And so when we talk about 444, or 4.2, or whatever the case may be, that we're still only growing our tax base at 2 and 2.5% at maximum. And we're, we're at a point now where, from a policy standpoint, that our taxes pay for 80% of our expenses right now. And so the other 20% are being funded by those other revenue streams that go on there. And as we, as we continue on here, and we discuss these things in our tax rate setting, and budget settings, et cetera, along the way, I'm just commenting on the, on the policy, which is inflation's back under control, so to speak, and there are some things that we're going to have to be a little bit more firm on going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, roll call on the transfer.
Improving transfer 200, Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zie?
Yes.
Counsel Dunneum?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, on the same theme, motion to approve Order 619, an order authorizing the city marshal contract.
Second.
So coming off of the appointment process of the new marshal, we were told we would have the contract, sort of its own process, with the initial version having been submitted as a draft. So what you have before you today represents the final, well, the potential final contract that was negotiated between the city and the new marshal. The all-in salary is around $175,000 per year, which is a reduction from the prior marshal, largely due to longevity or period of service to the city. The contract also stipulates 2.5% per year annual cost of living increases. We talked a little bit about that, the finances of it, but I would say that we had a few, few things, scrivener's things, and corrections to, to things along the way, but I would say the, the primary conversation was really around the, the quote, "essential functions" of the position, which are listed in the contract, and the desire of some councilors to have something in there about interfacing with the council and/or the public. And so that was part of the conversation. I think we sort of left the committee meeting with the understanding that potentially there could be some conversation between the administration and the, the new marshal about that. I'll be honest, I have not received, I don't have anything to share myself, but I know, hopefully we still have Ethan with us, perhaps he could share if somebody?
I think he just walked out. I thought that was him.
So he's running back to Zoom, hopefully to save me from myself. But, so I don't know if any change has been made. It was also noted during the meeting that, obviously, this is a contractual negotiation, and the contract was presented to us, signed. So while I need to burn one more minute, I will just say that there are, this is, there is no other contract, this position is not part of the, the department heads union, so this basically does accommodate or account for the entire, sort of, nature of the agreement. And that's it. It was, it was three to zero in committee, but with that, I think that outstanding question mark, hopefully it gave Ethan enough time to walk up the stairs. My yield.
Okay, Counsel Khan?
Yes, sorry, come to the chair of budget and finance. I was on an email with Andrew Levine, where they did revise to number 11, which previously for the contract, just said oversees the design implementation of the department's community relations programs, and attends related meetings, is revised to oversee the designs and implementation of the department's community engagement initiatives, including the Ward Counselor Program, community-oriented policing, and other partnerships and community relation programs, and attends related meetings as required. So those were inserted through former chief of staff, Andrew Levine, and Ethan was on that too.
Okay.
Sounds good. So I think we can just amend, amend to say that we'll, we'll obviously take the final version, including the language Counsel Khan stated, to be what we're voting on tonight.
Could you send that to me?
Sure.
Okay. Director Manning, are you there by any chance? Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm pleased to see we have a contract that has a 2.5% increase built into it. That is what I would really strive to have happen here in Newburyport, because as my counselor from Ward Five has pointed out, we're on an unsustainable path, and affordability, to a large extent, rests with us. And the constraints of Proposition 2.5 are never going away. And we, and we cannot continue to balance the city's budget on revenue streams that can, that are unpredictable and difficult to count on every year. Sometime or another, we're going to run out of new growth, we're going to have other constraints on, on how much we can fund. So to all the negotiating bodies, please take my words, consider them, to the, to the contract that's going to be negotiated with the schools, think about where we are and the sustainability and affordability of Newburyport, not just for people on fixed incomes, but for everybody. And, and our role is, is to really provide guidance and an oversight of how much we're going to allow our budgets to grow every year. Property taxes, water and sewer fees, waivers that redistribute, you know, what people have to pay, all those things are necessary, and we should really, really think carefully about how we build our finances and our budgets moving forward.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Clerk?
May I? On your amendment, so I assume it's a friendly amendment, that this approval is with those amendments. Can you tell me, the amendments, are they related to one section or a number of sections?
Yeah, I can just say it's, it's number 11, and it's, it's in the contract, and actually more on the administration's control on it. I think it was more just a consideration on their part, so I don't know, Chair, Budget and Finance Chair, if that's really an amendment versus something we agreed would be nice if the administration would consider putting into the contract. And so I sent you the language, but to me, it was almost a acceptance on the administration parts to factor that in, if that's helpful.
Yeah, paragraph 11 is miscellaneous.
Yeah.
Essentials?
Essential functions?
Yeah.
But that's where the?
That would be section three.
Okay. Section three, number 11, perhaps? Yeah, section three, number 11.
Ah, there you go.
But, but. First procedural, I do think we should have is an amendment, so it's in the record, and it's, it's there. So if somebody went back and looked at the order and the associated, so if you have the language electronically, we can read it again, I'm sure, if you need it.
Yeah, I can, I can read it.
Just to have, have it on the, on the recording.
Okay, Counsel Wright?
Just to be clear, this is a, this is a document negotiated by the administration and the, and the police, and the marshal. So I would, I would expect that we would get an amended contract, signed by both parties, to include that language, otherwise it's a moot point if, if they don't agree to.
Do you want to read the language?
I do have the language, thank you. If you want me to read it into the record, it looks like it's related to, as we said, 11, which is actually 11 under essential functions, not paragraph 11. Oversees the design and implementation of the department's community relations programs, attends related meetings as required.
That was the original, and then the second?
To be corrected with the following. Oversees the design and implementation of the department's community engagement initiatives, including the Ward Counselor Program, community-oriented policing, and other partnerships and community relations programs, attends related meetings as required. Period. If I might mispronounce, I mean, you could approve it, subject to the parties incorporating that into a signed agreement, rather than have it come back again.
Yes.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. All right, so I think at this point, we could, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so I just want to say that the form of this contract is, from a policy standpoint, is great. I, I think the at-large counselor reiterated where I was going with the 2.5%. Personally, I'd like to see it at 2% for a five-year contract along the way. But when I understand that there's other things that are being collapsed in here, I, you know, I, I think this is a solid contract for the city and for the city council going forward. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call on Order 619?
Order 619 with the amended language. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zie?
Yes.
Counsel Dunneum?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, that's it for business tonight. I just want to note to you all that we will be meeting for our standing meeting this coming Thursday. We have quite a few committee of the whole items, hoping to take up and complete ordinance 178, which is the affordable housing property tax exemption. Then we will take up for the first time the salary questions, mayor, city council, and school committee, those are also committee of the whole. And then we have the smattering of other items that are not committee of the whole, revolving fund spending limits, gift acceptance towards the library, clean energy, and then insurance. So that's going to be this Thursday. Unfortunately, I had to add another meeting next Thursday, because as you saw tonight, we took in the tax rate, both the tax factor and the tax rate setting, and we, because of the holiday coming at the end of the month, we don't have another standing meeting between then and the next council meeting, as we usually meet once. So next Thursday, we've added a meeting for 6:00 P.M. There were, there were no other meetings on the calendar that I noted, so I think we were safe on that, 6:00 P.M. here. But the tax factor and the tax are, of course, committee of the whole, so I want to invite you, if you're interested, to come. I also want to mention, lastly, that to the public, we are, we are required to have a tax factor in specifically hearing, and we will be doing that at that meeting. And so that has been posted, now under some new changes in the law, it requires a 48-hour notice, but it was already posted today, so that'll be in good shape. And if there are any residents interested in speaking for or against the proposed tax rate factor, which is 1.0, meaning residential, commercial are the same, you are welcome to attend, and we welcome your comment, and that'll be here, or if you wish, on Zoom. So that's it for budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Community services?
Yeah, thank you. Nothing coming out tonight, and we still have a cleared docket, so we'll be canceling our next meeting.
Well played.
Always feel very guilty if it makes any of you feel better.
For general government, for general government, nothing to report. I will try, I'll reach out to members and all of you and try to find an hour for the clerk hiring order. So our next meeting is in a little less than, a little less than two weeks, on the 25th, so something for next week.
Open space where community services was.
Actually, that's not a bad idea.
There you go.
Counsel McCauley?
Counsel President, we had passed a market-landing ad hoc association. Could we possibly ask the community service chair to maybe spearhead those meetings going forward, to be able to get us back on the docket and the clock, since we have a limited timeframe on that?
Sure. She and I can talk about that and some other things, and we'll work on the scheduling. Yeah, sounds good. All right, thank you. License and permits?
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd like to just start off by thanking my colleague for filling in for me at very late notice last Thursday. So I was not in attendance, but he also was able to provide me with minutes of what was discussed. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Communication 587 and Application 234. Second. So the Communication 587, I would just make a note to the clerk or future clerks, it would be helpful if these communications came in as applications, rather than communications, it's just a better process. But the communication was for the Newburyport Youth Hockey Tag Day, that is scheduled, and Jessica Murray was here to present an overview of the Tag Day for Newburyport Youth Hockey. It's 11/23 is the date. This is an annual fundraiser that they hold prior to the season starting. They've contacted the stores and have approval to be our front tag on those days at the stores that are mentioned in the, in the, in the communication. So this was, there was no public comment, and this was recommended out of committee two to zero. Then the Mark O'Ditt was, was in front of the committee for the Santa Parade, which is a joint effort between the Rotary, the Chamber, and the City. Mark obviously must have connections to the North Pole that we're not, we're not aware of, but he was here and presented an overview. The, the date is 12/1, with a rain date of 12/8. It generally takes, takes place between 2:45 and 4:45. The Santa arrives via boat, that the harbor master is in charge of, and will parade, and will parade up and, up into the, towards the market square. This is a recurring event, which is looked forward to by many, many people. Everything was in order, the signatures were in order, the insurance was in order, and the road closure, and everything was approved. So again, no public comment, and motion, recommendation to approve two to zero out of committee.
Okay, thank you. So that's on Application 234 and Communication 587 collectively. Okay. Further discussion? Hearing non, roll call?
Roll call, approving application 234 and Communication 587. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zie?
Yes.
Counsel Dunneum?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Okay, on the same theme, motion to approve Order 619, an order authorizing the city marshal contract.
Second.
So coming off of the appointment process of the new marshal, we were told we would have the contract, sort of its own process, with the initial version having been submitted as a draft. So what you have before you today represents the final, well, the potential final contract that was negotiated between the city and the new marshal. The all-in salary is around $175,000 per year, which is a reduction from the prior marshal, largely due to longevity or period of service to the city. The contract also stipulates 2.5% per year annual cost of living increases. We talked a little bit about that, the finances of it, but I would say that we had a few, few things, scrivener's things, and corrections to, to things along the way, but I would say the, the primary conversation was really around the, the quote, "essential functions" of the position, which are listed in the contract, and the desire of some councilors to have something in there about interfacing with the council and/or the public. And so that was part of the conversation. I think we sort of left the committee meeting with the understanding that potentially there could be some conversation between the administration and the new marshal about that. I'll be honest, I have not received, I don't have anything to share myself, but I know, hopefully we still have Ethan with us, perhaps he could share if somebody?
I think he just walked out. I thought that was him.
So he's running back to Zoom, hopefully to save me from myself. But, so I don't know if any change has been made. It was also noted during the meeting that, obviously, this is a contractual negotiation, and the contract was presented to us, signed. So while I need to burn one more minute, I will just say that there are, this is, there is no other contract, this position is not part of the, the department heads union, so this basically does accommodate or account for the entire, sort of, nature of the agreement. And that's it. It was, it was three to zero in committee, but with that, I think that outstanding question mark, hopefully it gave Ethan enough time to walk up the stairs. My yield.
Okay, Counsel Khan?
Yes, sorry, come to the chair of budget and finance. I was on an email with Andrew Levine, where they did revise to number 11, which previously for the contract, just said oversees the design implementation of the department's community relations programs, and attends related meetings as required. Including the Ward Counselor Program, community-oriented policing, and other partnerships and community relations programs, and attends related meetings as required. Period. If I might mispronounce, I mean, you could approve it, subject to the parties incorporating that into a signed agreement, rather than have it come back again.
Yes.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. All right, so I think at this point, we could, Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, so I just want to say that the form of this contract is, from a policy standpoint, is great. I, I think the at-large counselor reiterated where I was going with the 2.5%, personally, I'd like to see it at 2% for a five-year contract along the way. But when I understand that there's other things that are being collapsed in here, I, you know, I, I think this is a solid contract for the city and for the city council going forward. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call on Order 619?
Order 619 with the amended language. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
this to 60 units per acre, not the 70 we've been initially talking about, and the building's relationship to the sidewalks. Good conversation. We didn't make any amendments in committee, and we approve this 3 to 0. And I'll refer to Councillors Zied and McCauley for further input. Thank you.
Counsel McCauley?
Sure, thank you. I appreciate all the work that people have done on this and offered input and contributed to it going forward. I will support this, obviously, and I ask you to as well. I think Peapod is based really on the success of the 40R program going forward. Hopefully, we can rename that multifamily housing over the larger area going forward. But it's a version of this going forward. So when we talk about some of these things that the Chair had mentioned, specifically in Section 33D, and we talk about things like allowable uses, and we went from just residential to multi-use development, what we're really talking about is, by right, it's not forced either way, it allows a little bit of flexibility, both for the developer as well for us and our boards, to be able to have a conversation and talk about it. Yes, it may change the vote count a little bit, but I do think it might give us a better type of development going forward. So, and that was a recommendation as well from the joint session from the Planning Board. They as well are trying to create buildings that people would like to hang around with as opposed to just leaving and going somewhere else along the way. The other pieces to that of concern would be necessarily talking about this from minimum density. We originally had a minimum of 50 and a maximum of 70 going forward by right. In retrospect, maybe the idea is to go 30 to 60, again, for your considerations. Just as an FYI, what we do have is we have a development right next door, an existing development, which are the brick apartment buildings. They're roughly 40 to 45 units per acre already, spread out over six buildings. So it is consistent with the Harvard Business School study and presentation that was made of multiple buildings that have both residential and retail mixed in between them going forward. We think that this would be a good continuation of this site as well. So in a way, this is what we're looking at as opposed to necessarily what a 40B would overlay on top of that going forward. And so for those of, those people who say, why would we do Peapod when 40B is also progressing? You know, first and foremost, 40B and those discussions, they're early. They're going to the ZBA, they could fall apart for any reason. They might not be able to get financing. They might have issues with the landowner as well as the developer that's going to be hired for that. They might not be able to make traffic mitigation or water and sewer mitigation, et cetera, along the way. So what this does is it gives the city and us a say that says this is a backstop, an overlay, that we can then show to the ZBA that we, the council, this is what we think should be in here. It's a dense area. We think there's development, and we'd like to put parameters around it going forward. I think, as an aside, I think in retrospect, we probably would have, should have done this at the mobile gas station site on the corner. We just approved it altogether as a development agreement with a picture stapled onto it, and we really didn't give the ZBA any context as to what we were looking for, which was similar, but we, they had a blank sheet, and they had a design, and they didn't really know what the council was thinking. So I think we, in retrospect and learning from that, I think this is very beneficial to that. As I said, this will create a baseline in the zoning for what the council is looking for. Again, it's flexible, it is pro-growth, and it signals to the ZBA, who will review the 40B plan as it progresses, what we're looking for. So, and it sets, I think, in the longer term, it sets the discussion for the larger story Ave, Low Street area, as to how we want to begin those discussions going forward to be able to map out what we think we can attain there going forward. So thank you. As I said, I will support it. I hope you do as well, and I hope we can unite on this to send a strong message. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Counsel Zied?
So as a co-sponsor, I just want to add, hopefully be additive rather than repetitive, but I just want to speak largely to residents. You know, we're in a tough context here. As folks may or may not know, we are below our SHI, which is our subsidized housing inventory. We need to be at 10% to be marked safe from 40Bs. We're at about 9.45%, so we're a little bit short. So that is the context in which we initially approached this, was how can we, A, get residents a voice, because 40B is tough in that regard. It really, as the name and as the lore goes with it, it largely bypasses the typical zoning conversations, which we endeavored to have here, and in many cases, you know, bypasses other processes like the Planning Board and so forth, and goes directly to the zoning board, as my colleague mentioned, and becomes their sort of negotiation, if you will. So that's the context in which we started, and I think we heard from a lot of residents, you know, different opinion surely, but also some measure of frustration of not being able to talk to it, or who can I talk to about this thing? And so that was, I think, a very important context to start. So Peapod, without going through all the individual details, endeavors to do what I hope doesn't become, you know, a lost art or a lost science over time, which is just a very traditional zoning process. You know, we just had a conversation about what the area coder should look like, what parking might look like, traffic. We were able, fortunately, to borrow from something that we know, which is 40R, and so we didn't have to start from scratch and rebuild. But we did need to have some respect for the fact that this area is not precisely the same, the goals weren't precisely the same, and surely the context was not the same. So one thing that my colleague didn't mention that I'm particularly, I personally was particularly interested in, was also the, sort of, the public services aspect of this. I mean, we tried to threaten here, it didn't get a lot of attention, but getting some, something on paper from somebody about water, I mean, you know, I don't know if anybody else is nervous about it, but you know, we have these real problems around, like drought, and do we have enough water? And can the, even more basically, can the literal infrastructure in the area support this project? And I know from public comment, and I'm sure others would agree, you know, parking and traffic, particularly traffic on this one, was a huge concern. And again, those are things that are not always front and center with ZBA in terms of a 40B process. So I think we've tried to shine some light on those things. The context changed a little bit when it became clear we weren't going to get, frankly, engagement from the developer. They chose to not see this, if you will, that this wasn't important. I think that's a bummer, but I think what it actually did in a positive light was give us an opportunity to have some actual, again, classic zoning conversations. What is the direction we want to go in this area, and how could this inform the ZBA if they do get put in the 40B position? But also, how can it fit in contextually with maybe, you know, this came up a number of times, well, what if we rezoned a bigger area and so forth? So in terms of what's next, just so residents understand, you know, if a Peapod application is brought forward, that is, if this were to pass, that absolutely would be in bounds. That would actually go to the Planning Board. There are some strings in here with the traffic studies and so forth. If a 40B is to come in, that's going to, that has nothing to do with Peapod, unfortunately, other than the sort of tangential relationship that the ZBA can use this as a guidance document from the legislature. And by the way, we do own zoning. But it's its own standalone process legally in the ZBA, and they're going to negotiate, and they will also use the development agreement, which I do believe the mayor tried in good faith, you know, to represent the city's interests, of course. So we're all doing the best that we can from the seats in which we sit. So the last thing I would say is, to my colleagues, is I want to just harden a little bit more on that concern, that I feel like we're doing a lot of housing and a lot of development-related zoning and work, which has been very counter to where I started my career, where we were trying to tamp down infill and so forth. But we lack a lot of vital information about the stability of our public services to handle this stuff. I just, I'm not saying I know the answer, that it can or can't handle it, but I do want to know the answer. And so there has been conversation about, okay, we're going to study water, we're going to study sewer, and we've got these $20 million projects out there too that are related or unrelated. But we really need to get actual clarity, and we need to get it outside of the context of an individual project. Because once you're in it, now you're playing defense, and it's really hard to represent ratepayer, in the case of enterprise fund, interests and taxpayer interests in that context, when we're rushing to catch up with somebody else. So I beg and plead, this has to be objectified. Make some numbers out of it. Tell me what our water supply is. Tell me here, we're at below 90% in the reservoir. If you add another 500 units, if the water still will come out of the tap, great. Just tell me that, and then it will make me a lot more comfortable with this and other efforts that we're making. So I'll close with my, echoing my colleague, it's worth supporting. It was a tremendous effort to pull it together. A lot of hands have been in here, a lot of efforts from councillors, the Planning Board. I think it's a good product, and I think, I think at eight votes, it's worth it. I hope you'll consider supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Granis?
I'm just wondering if the sponsors or any of my colleagues could help explain to me what happens if this passes with regards to the development agreement with, that the mayor has just entered into? Thank you.
Counsel Zied?
Yeah, don't talk or do time. I mean, again, we're operating on our own parallel tracks, if you will. So, I mean, does this invalidate the development agreement? No, it does not. Does this inhibit the developer from filing a 40B? It does not. Where it could come in handy is if a 40B is filed, and again, the ZBA is looking for, you know, sort of, community input, this is one way they get it, through a process that's taken several months to adjudicate and figure out. So that's one way they could come and have some level of intersection. I also personally believe, although I know not everybody does, that I believe this has validity to argue with the state. If this gets kicked up to the state to be able to show them that we undertook a very real process and we gave them a path towards a development, I am done negotiating against myself. So whether they needed 70 units or 60 units, that's a debate we're not going to get to have because the developer never chose to engage with us, for better or for worse. So I think we need to be on the side of the residents, be a little bit conservative, and, you know, any zoning is subject to amendment if it came down to it. But I believe 40B is all based around economic viability, and typically, they need to argue that they didn't have a path under the existing zoning. So my opinion, but it'd be hard to argue that we didn't make an honest effort here to give them something really workable. Hope that helps.
Counsel Harmon, then Counsel Preston?
Thank you, Counsel President. Since we have Planning Director here, or perhaps the sponsors or the Chair of Planning and Development, someone will know the answer to this question. I think it's a compelling update to include mixed use. I think, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I think it has improved because of the hard work, and I'm inclined to support it. But I am curious about, we fast-forwarded to my colleague from Ward 1's point, a discussion of a parcel within a larger corridor around, you know, the potential for mixed-use development and housing on Story Ave that was in progress, but we paused for understandable reasons. And one of the ideas that had been discussed for Story Ave was potentially 40R, which my understanding is brings some access to state grants around infrastructure, around traffic measures that I'm curious, while this is modeled after, and I think quite compelling as a 40R, but not 40R for this parcel, does it preclude us or have any impact on our ability to do 40R in the area? I've, I will say to my colleague from Ward 1, who is very adept at naming zoning, that I don't think this is a Peapod, it is a KMod, because we don't have the whole plaza in there. And so I'm just curious, if we wanted to, at some point, expand that, what are our options?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counsel Harmon, Director Port?
Sure, I could probably just speak to that. Might not, I don't think it precludes us from doing that. I may not hear you're adopting it locally, but you're referencing essentially the same framework as 40R. I think, in essence, the state would be looking for us to probably expand that area that's bounded to just, you know, to go under the 40R program, but they would look at that area as being eligible and appropriate, obviously. So I think it really comes down to just how much credit do we get for that? They do consider some of these areas to be substantially developed, meaning we may not get the, excuse me, the financial credits that we got, excuse me, in the past, the same ratio, let's say, of dollar amount per acre for the area that's Port Plaza, because it's already developed. But that being said, none of this would preclude that, and actually, I suspect, unless we go into the larger rezoning, that we'll be looking to do something comparable, if you will, and might contemplate that. But it might then satisfy the state's concern about it being a larger district as opposed to just one part of a neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Preston?
Thank you. Almost got that wrong earlier. So I wanted to take a little bit further stab on answering the councillor from Ward 3's question about sort of the relevance of this. Because this is why I have taken my particular interest in getting Peapod passed, is, you know, not to stop the 30, or sorry, the 40B progress in the development agreement that the mayor is doing, but to be able to give sort of guardrails to the ZBA. And a place where I think it's really salient to sort of bring it back is, you know, when we went through short-term rental units, not that any of us wants to talk about it again, but when we went through short-term rental units, we actually, during public comment, we had a member of the zoning board of appeals come to us and say, you know, in their opinion, they didn't feel like, it's sort of a long story, but in his opinion, that potentially the ZBA would not be able to approve any short-term rental units. And we talked a lot about that as we talked about the legislation there, to be able to create the ordinance with a lot of language in there that the ZBA could utilize as, because all the units had to come through the ZBA, all the, sort of, the investor units had to come through the ZBA. And so we really were passionate about making sure that they had language so that they could be very clear that what the council wanted as it pertained to short-term rental units. So again, my interest in Peapod is not to stop the 40B process. My interest in Peapod is to give very clear guidance to the ZBA, who will be the body that reviews this development as it moves forward. It will not be the council, it will not be the Planning Board, it will be the ZBA. And this will give the ZBA a very clear understanding of what it is the council is looking for, for the development at that KMod building. You know, and hopefully, as we move forward to get to the councillor from Ward 4's concern or question, is, you know, I would love if this could be in the context of the entirety of Story Ave, right? But we've obviously allocated money for that, and, you know, I think a lot of us hope for a bigger vision for that area. It's only because the developer came to us with this piece of the puzzle that we can't make it as a part of the larger piece of the puzzle. But I think we can start here for this particular piece. Of course, this is a 40B. Hopefully, if we can get to safe harbor status with this, we don't face 40B for the rest of the area, and we can have more of an active negotiation as we look to the greater good of the Story Ave area. But I think that's, you know, why this is, you know, has a lot of real value for the city, for the council, for the ZBA, so that we can tie together these pieces. Hopefully, this will fit into the bigger puzzle of, you know, the entirety of the Story Ave area corridors, if we want to call it. But if not, we certainly can zone those other areas, and we'll just have to take this as a bye. But as I've said at one of the Planning Board joint hearings before, I feel like this piece of it, because it is a little bit in the back of the whole area, this piece of it can probably sustain a little bit more dense housing than some of the areas. But hopefully, again, this is just a piece of a larger puzzle.
Thank you. Counsel Preston? Further comment?
I have further, but I just spoke.
Anyone want to give her a break? Okay. Hearing non, Counsel Preston?
All right, thank you very much. So my concern with this, which we just discussed in our committee meeting, is, pertains to the change in 4A, and that is around the piece about bringing in mixed use. So as I've stated in basically every meeting where we've discussed this, I very much would like to see mixed use on the first floor of the building. I've often referenced that if I lived in the building, I would like to go downstairs to get myself a coffee, maybe a scone. And so I would very much like to see the mixed-use piece of it here. However, I am not willing to move to mixed use on this because it does change the threshold on the voting. And so if I have, do not have assurances that we can get eight votes on this with mixed use, I will move to make an amendment to remove any reference to mixed use to make sure that we are going to a threshold of six votes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yeah, so on, on note, I'll just directly respond. I'm definitely in favor of the mixed use. Actually, never envisioned this development as anything but including mixed use on the ground floor because, well, I think that's what kind of creates that village atmosphere in development like that. So I'm not sure where the assertion that we don't have the votes for mixed use, I really am maybe missing something there, but I hope we do, because, you know, it just seems to be appropriate for that particular development, so.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, just want to respond to that. I'm not necessarily making the assertion that we don't have the votes, but just to be certain that we're all talking about the same thing. Because of the way the state statute is written on this, if we include the mixed-use piece of it, that changes the threshold to needing a supermajority. So we would need eight votes if we include the piece around mixed use. If we do not include the piece around mixed use, then this only needs six votes. And that's why I am saying, if I can't have assurances that we have eight votes to pass this, I would make an amendment to take out the mixed use.
You could make an amendment, and people can discuss all of this. So Counsel Zied?
I just didn't.
Yeah. I like, I'm really actually hopeful that this is unanimous, because I think that there's a bigger, broader question than just the mixed use. It's the message that we send. And so I haven't heard any real dissent about the proposal, so that would be the way I would frame the question, is if you don't like something, could you tell us? It's an open session, it's the point of debate. But I'm feeling good about it, and I'm frankly feeling good about the prospects, and I think the work's been put in, not just by the sponsors, but by everybody who's, again, put their hands on this. So in the interest of being bullish, let's go.
Counsel Preston? Counsel Preston.
So, I guess, Delton Spenders, maybe? Or, what does Walt always say? Trust but verify. There you go. So I guess I will put myself on the line and make the amendment to strike mixed use under 4A, so that we can have the debate around it. Again, I want to be very clear in signaling that I personally don't want to take out mixed use, but I'm willing to make that amendment to see where we go with that, so that we can have a better sense of that, and then I will be happy to rescind it if we don't need it.
Where exactly would this strike?
It is Section 33D.
Yeah.
For A. Correct? So we would be getting...
I don't see mixed use there.
And then, is it number two?
Is it G?
It's not the online version. It's on the paper.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's on the paper version. We made those adjustments.
So, yes, Section 33D, Development Standards, for A.
Okay.
No second yet.
So, yeah, that's right. So, the motion is to strike for A entirely?
No, it'd be AII.
A II.
Got you. It's AII.
Just use.
That whole sentence.
I need a second to voting, or to have a discussion. Do you have a debate?
If there's no second.
You don't have a second.
Huh? You don't have a second? All right, well, then I will vote like heck.
So, there is a motion, but it was not seconded?
There's not a second. The motion fails. We're back to the motion.
Back to the original motion.
Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Council President. So, I think we had a really good meeting. Gosh, was it the first Planning and Development Committee? And I feel like many people were here, and we went through this, and I remember bringing up a lot of things as well, and so I do appreciate the effort, and I think at that time, we knew that we were going to get something from the planning board, and we got some recommendations. I'm glad they were incorporated here, and otherwise, I think this is ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Further comment? Counsel Preston.
I'm going to let that one go. I'm moving on, people. So the only other piece that we were missing here is the G, correct? Or not the G, the, the units per acre. This version no longer has a units per acre.
G.
It does.
G, right? So, following along.
Thirty to sixty. Page three of four, top three.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Thirty to sixty. Oh, so I thought we just had a conversation.
It's in there.
We did.
Forget it, I'm confused. I said, I'm done.
Can I make a motion to move the question?
Yeah.
All right.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah. And it's done.
All right. Should we go right to a vote?
Roll call.
It's a roll call on approving First Reading Ordinance 176 with amendments October 8th, 11/7, as written, on the desk. Counsel Grantis.
Yes.
Counsel Harmon.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
That would be unanimous.
All right, moving right along.
Moving right along.
Motion to approve Ordinance 184, as amended in joint public hearing, the Ordinance for our MBTA communities.
Second.
So, we voted this out last Wednesday night at our joint hearing with the planning board. This is MBTA communities. This is what we went through all spring, when we were negotiating the Parker Street extension of our 40R district. We have not heard from the state. That was asked tonight. The state has not responded to any of the communities on the North Shore and the Merrimack Valley. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Director Port, but yes. So, we're ahead of the state. They put their requirement on us to be compliant by the end of the year, but they have yet to respond. With that being said, the updates that are in here are basically a few dimensional, I'm sorry, design standard requirements for the 40R. Specifically, they wanted to include some additions to make sure that we could have bike lanes on Parker Street, so that is the Sub District C. The design standards also give a little bit more flexibility in the visual of the building. The third page is Item 7, that's where they're trying to break up the facades, and Section 9 is where it includes the sidewalks. But overall, this is the zoning that we put in our order in July, and we approved it 2-0 out of our Planning and Development Committee meeting on Wednesday night, and I hope we can all approve it tonight. And I will defer to our two sponsors, the Ward 2 and 3, who actually have this in their wards, so, thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Donahue.
Thanks, President, and thank you, Chair. Yeah, so this is pretty straightforward, and hopefully won't involve too many questions of debate. For Ward 2, it really just kind of crosses over Parker to that small portion that we're picking up and being able to include, and I don't know if my, my three counsel wants to add to that, but, yeah, this is a continuation, and, like I said, pretty straightforward, so hopefully we can move through this one quickly.
Thank you. Counsel Wright.
I think, just for the record, I think we should indicate that the zoning, that the planning board had no changes to the zoning.
Correct.
In their recommendation.
Right. That is true.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Zede.
Thank you. So I am going to argue with myself here for a few minutes. So, I just want to express two sides of my head on this, and I'm going to just say at the beginning that I'm going to vote yes on this. But I want to explain my heartburn, because I don't think it's going to go away, unfortunately. So, the complaints I have, or the challenges I have, are, I'm really nervous about the erosion of commercial. I just think that's a bad, long-term strategy for the city of Newburyport. We have such limited commercial in certain, very certain areas, and to me, as the Chair of Budget...
Counsel Lane, I'm going to mute you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So, the erosion of commercial is really challenging. As Chair of Budget, what I wanted to say is that I view commercial as a real opportunity, or maybe a real safety right now, against even more property tax growth, because typically commercial properties utilize less services and yet pay at least the same tax rate, and I know that's its own debate. So that's really challenging. The second one is, I mentioned this earlier, but I still have this real lack of clarity about whether we can actually, what capacity we can handle from a public utilities perspective. And so, in theory, if we weren't having our hand forced, in a sense, we might have a bigger discussion about that. You know, here, we're zoning for the potential for, I think, what accounts to hundreds of new units, potentially. Will they happen? Nobody knows, but, you know, oftentimes, we find ourselves on this floor saying, how did this happen? And usually, it's something that happened 30 years ago, and so eventually, things do come to fruition, and we're here today, and it is our responsibility to be stewards, so I have concern about that. Then next to are the state involvement. I know some people look at this favorably, but home rule was always sacrosanct with respect to zoning, and this is just one of a number of different inputs that are being provided by the state legislators, but they don't have to come down here and sort of answer these on-the-ground questions that we do, and whether it's happening in a neighborhood, or it's happening here, or it has to do with commercial. And, as a result, they're very broad-brush rules. I mean, Newburyport's not the same as even our surrounding and budding communities, let alone the North Shore, let alone the South Shore, and they've given this, in my humble opinion, arbitrary, you have to have this number of acres, and it has to meet this threshold or that. And even more frustrating, a lot of those standards come out of administrative-type positions like EO, HLC, instead of actually being written in the statute. You can read the statute, it's available, so-called Section 3A. It's only like 10 sentences, and amazingly, it's created this huge thing across the state. So, I got problems with that personally. And the last one is, you know, one of the big arguments for 40R initially was to try and take pressure off the neighborhoods, but respectfully, with this or anything, I'm not seeing the pressure come off the neighborhoods, and so I'm concerned, like, why, we can't have it all ways. You know, I think at that time, 40R was, again, argued to say, well, we need to have density somewhere, it should be here where we think the density can be handled, and in exchange, some of the historic neighborhoods, some of the infill would be able to be tempered or removed, and that's concerning. Now, to argue against myself, I think this is a fantastic effort, it's the best we could do to comply with this, and that's to the credit of the sponsors, to the credit of the planning office. I can't believe the state won't get back to us, I'm incredulous at that, and I do, I want to say, I think it's ridiculous that we're given mandates with dates and no money and no time, and we're supposed to do it in some record time, and we're supposed to push it on to our residents, whether they want it or not, under the guise that, well, we have to comply with state law. And, again, I'm concerned that they've tasted that now, and it's going to be hard to get the taste out, because it's really enriching if you're just looking at a broad-based spreadsheet for the state and saying we have these goals, instead of having to deal with the locals. So, on balance, I wanted to say my piece, but I am going to support it, because it was that effort made to comply with this. We will be in compliance, in theory, but let's assume that we're going to be. I think between the MVPC work and the work we've done in-house, we have a reasonable degree of confidence that that will be the case, so I will support it. I hope our state legislators will listen, that this stuff is really uncomfortable, and the least they could do is at least come talk to us before they pass some of this stuff at the State House. And I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to argue with myself, I think I know where I am on this, but I've been hearing the same conversation from the colleagues here. I do want to point out, I think there are general trends that we should be looking at, to understand why we are where we are, and definitely it helped when we were going through the accessory dwelling units effort, in terms of number of households and what it takes, you know, for households to grow. We're not growing that significantly. However, with the intention of, when you look at the number of people per household and the types of homes that we have, a lot of our table of use in our zonings and how we really looked at multifamily homes versus a one-family and two-family, our philosophy in the city has somewhat controlled, almost to a detrimental effect. And that's really important when we look at our housing production plan, that answers the why. And now, the how is what we're getting to, which is why I feel really good about the work we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Harmon.
I'll just agree with my colleague from Ward 1. I have a little bit of heartburn about this, too, in terms of not really knowing the base that we're building off of. But I do want to just point to a really strong collaborative process that started with some of us freaking out when we realized that this was going to have to happen on the timeline that it's had to go on. And I think, you know, my hope is that, as we get closer to bringing forward a final version of our ADU amendment, that you'll also see and agree that collaboration and thoughtful crafting of this policy adds the layers of protection that we're able to control. And I think if you pair that with P-Pod, K-mod, and something that gets us out of 40B and into safe harbor, allows some of this by right housing to be developed, allows some people to do some things in their neighborhoods, it feels like a big zoning year, and something that, as I see the Planning Director nodding his head, you know, we've gotten probably more accomplished than if I could put words in his mouth than he expected us to, assuming this passes. And so I don't think that this is something that we're just going to keep adding to. I think we have to pause and see the impacts of these things, and realize some of the benefits, and also understand where the harms may be and how we mitigate them. But I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call on the First Reading Ordinance 184. Counsel Grantis.
Yes.
Counsel Harmon.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Eleven. Thank you.
Thank you all. And to the Ward 4 Counsel, yeah, we have done some zoning. I mean, this is the first, like, look what we did tonight. We passed P-Pod, and we passed MBTA. I mean, this is like globe-worthy. Newburyport passes, they're MBTA.
Unanimously.
Yeah, unanimously, of all things. So, thank you very much. Going forward, next week, we are going to meet on the 19th. We have some cleanup on some of the communications we have on P-Pod and MBTA communities, we'll take care of that. We have two appointments to take care of, and I will add the Brown School communication, so we can start having that conversation next Tuesday at 6:30. With that, we also have a joint public hearing on ADUs with the planning board that was continued to next week, and I believe the two sponsors have more information that they're going to add. If there's updates to that, can you get that posted sooner rather than later? What I do have in my committee minutes are the version 3 that you gave us the last time, that's part of the minutes, but questions have been asked for what we're going to be working to on next Wednesday night, so that can get posted sooner rather than later. That would be most appreciated. That's it for P and B. Thank you all.
Thank you. That would lead us to Public Works and Safety. Counsel McCauley.
Everyone's going to have to bear with me on this, on these three. I'd like to make a motion to approve Order 625.
Second.
This is, this is parking during the holiday, that it will collectively read, collection of daily parking fees, and all lots and garages will be suspended from December, and I'm going to change the dates, December 20th to December 28th. An sign will be hung on the kiosk, free parking, season's greetings from the citizens of Newburyport.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, sorry. It's the 20th to the 27th. I know that's not what it says here, and so I'm going to take that as a friendly amendment along the way. And the reason being is, what we learned today is, this has a labor impact on our parking staff. We had some different dates in here, and so we're trying to minimize that impact along the way, and still provide before and after Christmas along the way. We've accounted for the third invitation night, which tends to be less populated, and hopefully that will drive more people in on the third one during the Christmas break, and then a couple days afterwards, if there are returns, et cetera, along the way. So that's been our thought press on that. We had approved this 3-0 in committee.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion on Order 625? Seeing none, roll call.
Approving Order 625 with the dates December 20th through December 28th.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
I'm having a tough night.
Not many left.
It might go like this. Counsel Grantis.
Yes.
Counsel Harmon.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Motion to approve Ordinance 186.
Second.
This is the ordinance to restrict parking on various streets. It was amended in committee. In general, what we've, they've tried to do is not impact existing parking restrictions, but there are a couple that have had existing parking restrictions changed. I'll refer to, for those, 127 and 128 in your packet. It lists out the different streets. We went through each one along the way. I don't think it's appropriate unless you guys want to, but I don't think it's appropriate along the way. I'll just go down them, their locations, 4 through 29 plus location 10, which was out. But there's High Street and Plummer Ave. There's no recommended changes. There's High Street and the Senior Center driveway, no recommended changes along the way. There is High Street and Chapo Street. I skipped over one, but there was no changes. This was in front of the church and we made an amendment to shorten the cycle to give back some parking right there in front of the church. Going forward, High Street at Boardman Street, this one I want to bring up, it had quite a bit of conversation going on it. It was amended to the stop at the edge of the driveway on the south side, which would benefit the funeral home that's parking there along the way and it would increase the sightlines. And then High Street, Carey Ave, it was, we amended it on the north side, which is the overpass street, back to the sign that's actually there that says no parking that we don't enforce because people still park there with the pictures that were shown. Auburn Street and Market Street was the, the single biggest conversation we had. It's the one in front of the Fordbury. Kelly School, we had an incident, an accident right there where a youth was actually hit in the classwalk by a passing car. We've amended it to include an area on the north side of the street in front of 162 and 160 High Street. We hadn't heard any negative feedback from the boaters, but we may, as, as things get blocked out. And what's going to be done is, and its paint is going to be used to paint out the different areas, to keep cars out of that area. Hopefully we'll increase the sightlines when we look at the crosswalks with, with people in them with the oncoming traffic going forward. And all the rest of them really have no recommended changes. We agree with what goes on there. So with that, it's a motion to approve all of them collectively going forward. And our recommendation was 3 to 0, except one that was 2 to 1 and that was, that involved Merrimack Street and Woodland, right?
129.
129.
129. One, sorry, what was that?
Merrimack Street, oh, in front of 129. All of them were 3 to 0 except that one. The Ward Counsel couldn't support it, given the feedback that he had received.
Any further discussion? Thanks for the great explanation. It's a lot of work. All right, hearing none, roll call?
Roll call approving ordinance 186, first reading. Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. A motion to approve order 587.
Second.
Okay, this is the one that I'm going to ask for your patience and understanding on a little bit. You would think that it would be very straightforward to ask for a list of cameras that we have in the city, but it started at 9, that we're going to go in here, which got whittled down to 3, and then the existing ones were up to 75 plus and growing along the way. And so what we did is we went through them and you'll see them in your packet going forward. And I took out all the old ones so that I wouldn't, I wasn't cross-referencing and I just put the new ones all in at the back going forward. It starts at page 121. And so just to give you an overview, we took, we took thing, well, first of all, thank you to all, we passed order 182, ordinance 182, which was the surveillance, which is adding to 210. It sets some rules and guidelines going forward. It also asked the administration to come up with a policy as to how this data is going to be handled, who's going to be looking at it, and how they're going to be trained, et cetera, along the way going forward. They have till 1231 to do that and it needs to be submitted to us as an order. So, you know, as part of that, thank you for the support in helping us get this. We've had a lot of conversation about the impact of cameras and the surveillance that has been going on within the city itself. And most of the stuff, which I'll run through now, is pretty benign, but I, I am going to hold our conversation in the library till the last bit of this, so I'm jumping around a little bit. For the Department of Public Service, they have cameras at certain places that do asset management, making sure that the asset itself is protected. And of these, the six that are here, they added five more that had to do with the water, the wastewater treatment plant, again, looking at the assets. And then, oh, we discovered they had two that were just looking at random public, going north and south along the way going forward. They have since removed those from the list, so we're, they're off our list as well. There is two cameras at the water treatment plant that again, look at the, the equipment to make sure that it's running properly along the way. We're not, we're not capturing public, we're not capturing employees, things like that. The Harbor Master has an existing camera on its boardwalk. It's also part of conjunction with Department of Homeland Security. It's on the boardwalk, it's on, it's at Cashman, it's at Heinz Bridge, it's at the mouth of the river, et cetera, along the way. This has a feed of it from Company Johnson Controls, which is, is another problem that we, we'll, we'll talk about in a minute. And then the next four are this Harbor Master cloud. This is the new technology that we've embraced. It's, it's by a manufacturer called Vakata. It is consistent with what's being used at the high school. These cameras continually roll, they store their feeds in the cloud. No one sees them unless you actually go in and actually look at this data. And supposedly every 30 days, the, the data is purged, but we're not sure of that because we haven't really started embracing that. We don't have a, a consistent policy that needs to align with Massachusetts data collection laws and being able to provide the data to both defendants as well as prosecution or FOIA requests or things like that. It, it's handling the data and managing the data is more complicated than just, it's sitting in the cloud somewhere till we need it because we actually have responsibilities under state law to be able to do that. But we're okay with these because they are, the Harbor Master is a, a law official going forward. That, that was the change that was made a couple of years ago, that they are now a law enforcement official on the water going forward. So we think that these locations are good for the safety of the boaters as well as the safety of the general, the general public that would be using it. When we talk about the parking garage, there's a number of them in the parking garage, there's 19 in the parking garage. They don't work. And so they've been in since the garage has been there. The cameras work nicely, but the feeds don't go anywhere. So there's been a two-year project that we've uncovered that says they want to get the control back to NPD, Police Department, so they can be monitored going forward. This is a, a common theme with things that you'll see that aren't in a cloud environment, is that our feeds back to a center where we believe the data's being stored and viewed and, and things like that just aren't being done. And so we hope that as part of the policy, we hope that the, all of this can be resolved by the end of the year, but our, our intent was to approve the locations and work through the details again as we need to over the next 90 day, 60 days plus the next year when we get our first technology use report on these. So even though the, the cameras don't work in the garage, we approve them for the locations because we were told that we're going to have, we're going to have live feeds on this going forward. Part of the issue that with sending everything to just NPD is they've had on, on their CIP number, a dispatch center that needs to be upgraded to handle the increased volume of this kind of stuff that comes in besides increased number of staff. So we've tried to be sensitive to the fact that NPD can't handle the volumes of these things going forward, both physically and technologically, to be able to do that. Again, it shouldn't be this hard, but it, apparently it is. We talk, and so we, we're moving forward with approving the, the camera locations in the garage. The Senior Community Center, there are four of them that are exterior, that were there for security reasons, secured, securing the access to the building itself. And then they installed two inside, which again, they're, the newer technology, Vakata platform. But, but this is the kind of discussion that we have that is disturbing. We're looking here to limit what surveillance goes on and the use for this is, well, if we're not here, we could just look at the cameras and see what's going on. And, but that's, in the meantime, they're capturing people, they're capturing voters, they're capturing people that come in and out, that come in and out of the different offices that go along there and potentially tracking that information going forward. So it's really important for a policy. You know, we had some debate about whether we just wanted to get rid of these two cameras themselves, but our recommendation in control was no one at the Senior Community Center should have access to these cameras because that, that's not what we're using cameras for. We're using cameras for asset management, we're using cameras for public safety in a public safety arena, not tracking individuals in a building. Our downtown locations, the Firehouse, Inn Street, Inn Street and State and Water, these are safety issues that we've approved and got some grants from previously to install them. Again, the cameras work, but the feeds don't, so no one's really too there. We had some emotional testimony from a, a gallery owner who was down on Inn Street, who had, who had some vandalism and was looking for the police to help him with the cameras and they, and they told him the cameras didn't work along the way. So after a couple of those instances, he actually closed and moved on and came and gave us some testimony that if the cameras worked, he probably would still be there, but that it just wasn't in the cards for him going forward. Again, we're, we're digressing here. The police station has two, of all places, the police station has two cameras, both exterior ones, and they do have two on holding cells, which is part of a civil liberties issue to make sure that anyone in the holding cells are treated fairly and have visibility to them. We, there are four cameras in animal control, but that's for the animal control, the safety of the animals themselves going forward. Again, we're in favor of these. Now we hear the library. The library was a conversation all to itself. They have 16 cameras, 13 of them interior and three exterior. The three exterior are safety, they, they look at doors and parking lots and they're monitored by the police. Again, not too, not too sure that they actually get to the police. The internal cameras of the public library are governed by a policy which is itself disturbing in so much that it, it strives to have a safe environment in the, in the, in the library itself, complement other measures to protect the safety of library visitors, employees, assets, property, there are some valuable assets there. But here's the disturbing part, to identify persons, breaking the law, violating the library's patron policy. So what we have here is a policy that they actually actively track people in the library. And they say they don't, but the answer is that they do. So, and, and how do we know that? We know that because every night, they use their cameras to track who's in the library and who's not in the library going forward. So their policy, their actions and support of their policy, policy don't align. Their policy contradicts themselves. We did hear testimony during the, the infamous incidents that were going on at the library with bullying. There was never any camera footage of bullying going on. We did have an instance and we heard testimony that a counselor was tracked from the front door into the, into the archive center and then back out again going forward. We heard some other anecdotal stories that were just as disturbing along the way. It's clear that staff is utilizing them as part of their operations, which is not aligned with their policy, but on the other hand, it, it, it seems to be okay because that's what the operations of the library's doing. That led us to come to a decision that said, either all of the cameras have to come out of the library or no one at the library can actually have access to them. And so we decided at this point, absent of citywide policy, that our recommendation is no one at the library should have access to the cameras going forward. So, let me pause there. I know I've been speaking for 10 minutes and rambling about security cameras and locations and the lack of policy, et cetera, along the way. But does anyone have any questions about this? Yes?
Thank you for that explanation. Does the library, you said that the library uses the cameras at night? Do they just not walk around the library at night? All right, thank you.
Counsel Wright?
So, so thank you for that endeavor. I haven't actually been engaged, but I'm flabbergasted, to use an old-fashioned word, that we have 75 cameras in the city. 75 cameras! Wow, George Orwell would be so proud of us.
Further discussion, Counsel McCauley?
So, again, I, I just want to reiterate, in, in trying to get our arms around this, the committee is going with the list that's in front of you along the way. We want, as part of our ordinance, we want a full city policy by the end of the year that we can review and approve and probably reexamine this under a different spotlight going forward. And then again, as part of that ordinance, in one, in 12 months, so by October 31st of next year, we would, we should have and expect our first technology use report, which looks at every one of these cameras and asks the owner of the camera why they're using them, what information they had, how they were using, what, you know, did they, what were they engaged with in this and the type of information that they were collecting going forward. So that's what we decided to do. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counsel Preston?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so what we did learn along the way, again, with the library, is that all of the internal cameras are all accessible to anyone just off the circulation desk. There's a computer screen with small squares of all of the varying cameras across the, the library, and again, accessible to anyone who goes to walk by. And we also learned that both the head of the library, the assistant head librarian and a person of his choosing are, all have access to the password for the, to be able to look at the tape of the, the library cameras. And, you know, I in particular asked the question, so, well, if I was that third person that was chosen on Monday, do you change the password on Tuesday so that I can't anymore? And, and the answer was no, because the password was hard to remember. Of course, anyone can write down a password and need not remember it at the time. So I guess the question that I'm getting to, because I do want to be done by 10:30 because I don't want to let Counsel Wright have his opportunity, is, is this effective immediately? Like, when does this stop at the library?
We, as soon as we pass it and it's signed.
Well, let's get it passed before 10:30.
Okay, Counsel McCauley?
We're, we're approving the locations and the control that we have in these that are recommended and it would happen as quickly as, as physically possible. Again, we're racing against time. We're hoping the city comes up with a more, the administration comes up with a more comprehensive policy that addresses the concerns that we've raised all through the discussion going forward.
Okay. All right, so a motion on the floor is to approve, Counsel Donahue?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to get my.
Counsel Wright, why don't you make a motion on 7, 7B?
I'm not going to be that quick, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I did work, you know, with my colleagues to make this list more digestible and to get answers to a lot of questions that we had. However, at the end of the day, I am grossly uncomfortable with all of this. So I'll be voting present, but the rest of you can, you know, please, let's, let's keep a close eye on this. This is just, it's too much. It's just too much and civil liberties means too much to me and everything we heard throughout the many discussions. I, we don't even have a dispatch center that can handle the, the volume that we're asking the police to overview and, and, you know, be in control of. So until that happens, I, I just, I say shut them all down.
Okay. Further discussion, roll call? Counsel Granis? Why don't we invoke the rule because we're going over?
Pass 10:30?
You're taking away his.
invoke Rule 7B, motion made by Counsel Wright, seconded by Counsel Z. Any discussion? Majority approval? Roll call?
Roll call on waiting rule, Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Take your time. Counsel Grant?
Thank you. So real quickly, when it comes to the control of the cameras, one thing that we discussed with the city marshal, who was, who was present, was they're not going to be reviewing the tapes regularly. The NPD will only be viewing the tapes upon a crime being committed, so I just wanted to lay that out there for my colleagues. Thank you.
Well, now we've got all the. Well, now we get all the time in the work.
I could say a whole bunch of things if you could.
Any further discussion? Counselor Zied?
Since we have a minute, I don't understand, I'm completely, it's so funny how there's a juxtaposition here. The cameras you don't want to work, work, and the ones you do want to work, such as the ones in the parking garage, which is a structure which we had a lot, like a year of conversation about security, don't work. So is the only path to making the cameras working in the garage, the dispatch center renovation, or is there another path that at least can create some? I mean, that's the classic place you want cameras, for protection of life and limb.
Yeah, so it, so we blame it on the three IT directors we've had over a couple of years, but that still predates the garage, right? You know, so it post-dates the garage, and the cameras predate that. It's been a control mechanism that Company Johnson Controls, again, we've changed some people along the way, and they're going to fix that. And it should come in on a feed, on a laptop. The data has to be recorded on a server in our, on our facilities going forward. Some of these older cameras, we have to do the storage, we have the control of them, things like that. The newer technology stores everything in the Amazon cloud, but that's, that has its own pitfalls, in so much that it's in the cloud, and, you know, anyone trying to, you know, clean up Facebook or Google or something like that realizes that it never actually goes away going forward along the way. So that has its, a whole nother issue, but it is potentially cleaner going forward, especially from a costing standpoint going. My understanding, and what we've been told, is we don't owe anything to Johnson Controls. They're going to fix the feeds coming in going forward, but what we have asked for is when we finally decide on these cameras, we are going, we probably need to revisit the transfer we did in June, because they don't need half the amount of money that was going forward, because there's half the cameras and, and that, it wasn't just cameras, it was also the data, the entry systems and, and things like that that go along with it. But again, the debate that happened is that we're, we're, you know, we're George Orwell one step removed in that we're tracking employees. We're tracking employees when they come in the building. We're tracking employees as they work on their daily lives. We're not tracking them in the bathroom, but we're tracking, we're trying to track them when they, you know, walk up and down the hallway, when they leave their desk, when they log into a, a, a building or log out of a building, or how many times they come in, or things like that. This data is being collected along the way. The unions had big problems with that, right? As they should, and as they, you know, this is workplace anxiety creating issues that go on there. And, and everyone couches it, well, you know, if there's, this is for public safety, if there's an event. Well, who decides what the event is, right? Is it, is an event in the market square, and you don't like the protesters, because you don't like what they're talking about? That's an event? And then we get to profile those people, because we see them on camera? Or is an event, you know, somebody gets hit by a car, and we want to find out, we want to track down what goes on there? All those are undefined, and unfortunately, in our discussion, you know, everyone meant well, but they couldn't answer those questions. And so that's, that's part and parcel of the anxiety that we had in trying to say we want to approve control, we want to approve locations, and things like that.
Further discussion? Okay, roll call on the order? Approving order 587. Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Hahnin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne? Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Yes.
We talked you into it.
There's a reason.
Good, Counselor McCauley, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to meet on the 18th. We did have some new things coming in, but I did promise the bike share people that they kept getting pushed, and so they will be front and center on that, but I don't know the topics, but we'll be there on the 18th. If community services is in a meeting, then we might try to expand our timeframe a little bit, but I have to talk to committee members. The 18th is when we do.
Counselor Zied?
Just a quick, sorry, next Thursday, that meeting that I added for budget, because it's a tax classification hearing, I believe I need a quorum of the city council.
Okay.
So I'm going to be emailing you to just to make, see who can attend. I need to get to six. If I can't, then we'll have to do the classification hearing at the next city council meeting. So I'd appreciate it if you could get some eyes on that. I'll email just to poll and see who can make it.
So next Thursday, 21st?
6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay.
And motion to adjourn.
And tomorrow, tomorrow night, 6:30, Senior Center joint meeting with the school committee. Counselor McCauley?
I just have an item for go of the order, it's very quick. I had a couple of residents who asked that I mention the DPS Highwayman Ron Keefe, some of the work that he's doing. We often see the good work that happens downtown, because we see it, but this is out in the wards, and, and they are trying to catch up on everything before the, the potential snow hits and the bad season hits, et cetera, along the way. But they, when, they asked me to say kudos to Ron and his team for trying to catch up and catch up on a number of different things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yeah, so click go of the order. The reason I changed my mind at the last minute. I want to point out that tonight should mark some kind of milestone, because we voted unanimous on every single thing that came our way tonight, so I think we owe ourselves a little.
Well, we haven't adjourned yet.
I'm going to go ahead and just guess what's going to be.
Whether it be a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor, roll call. Counselor Grantis? Counselor Hahnin? Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Perfect, perfect. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Lane, you want to reconsider? He's on the mend, we'll see him soon.